I'd like to call the order of the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee. As always, a reminder, the meeting's being recorded. Your image and your voice will be broadcast. We obviously, the first item in our agenda is always is our public comments. For anyone, just a reminder, our current procedure for public comments, we are requesting that, you know, individuals do reach out to their parent inquiry email and or Christie Churgeon to request time during our public comment. It's not mandatory. If there is anyone in our attendee list this evening that would like to make a public comment, please utilize the raise your hand functionality. I will look at that. I will try to track that if there's anybody interested and call on those folks toward the end. You know, in the future, if we have typically, we allot 20 minutes for our public comment section. It's usually two to three minutes per individual. If we are ever in a position moving forward where we are going to hit the limit or need to manage that from a timeframe perspective, just to give an idea, we'll be calling on the folks who requested that. You know, formally ahead of time, you know, to start it off. So just so everybody kind of knows moving forward, if there's any questions around that. So with that being said, we'll go into our public comment section. I'm going to read down the list that was provided to me. We do have four public comments this evening. The first person on a public comment section will be Tara Koziac.
Good evening. I did not plan to speak this evening, but at the last minute, I felt compelled to do so. Please make it known, though, that I'm speaking as an individual, removing my union hat for the moment. I'm not going to reiterate the things I've already stated at past meetings. Instead, I just want to tell you all how proud I am of our district. Beginning with the administrative team, to the power professionals, the custodians, the cafeteria staff, the teachers, the nurses, the specialists, the list goes on. On March 13th, 2020, we were told to pack up some stuff and plan to work and teach remotely for a week or two. Each and every member of this district has risen to the unprecedented occasion beginning almost a year ago. We didn't just do what we had to to get by. We did amazing things for our students and adapted in ways we never would have imagined. I think in many ways, we surprised ourselves. We really came together last spring and fed off of each other. Those with strengths and technology willingly helped others. We worked as a team and made a really lousy situation, the best that it could be for our students. That is what we do. I'm proud of our district because we offered our students a model of learning that surpassed that of many, if not most, other districts in the Commonwealth. We hit the ground running in September and welcomed students back into our classrooms. I won't pretend we weren't nervous. We offered our students consistency. We didn't have to revert back and forth between the different learning models often or for lengths of time. Consistent goes a long way with children and young adults. It may not have been what they were used to, but they knew what to expect. I'm proud of our district because I know when we fully return, we will do so with the same enthusiasm that we had on March 16th, 2020, when we began to teach remotely for the first time ever. That's what we do. As more and more of our staff get vaccinated, the anxiety of a full return will begin to dwindle. There is light at the end of this dark tunnel for all of us. I didn't speak tonight as the BBEA president, but I do want you all to know that I couldn't be prouder to be just that. And thank you for once again, listening to me.
Thank you, Tara. Next on our list will be Marie Phillips. Marie may not be ready. We will get two Marie's up there.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Marie Phillips from Boylston. I would first like to thank you all, thank all the school committee members and administration, teachers and staff for all the time that you have put into our schools this year. I'm going to talk about the two points on the school calendar and the return in April. School calendar. After reviewing a draft of the school calendar, I noticed the past few years that Good Friday is no longer a day off. As a religious education teacher at St. Mary of the Hills, there are a number of students in the program that participate in Stations of the Cross at noon. Perhaps you would consider Good Friday being a half day so that students may attend without having to miss class time. Also, typically, the beginning of the school is a gradual start, beginning on the Wednesday before Labor Day where students attend school for three days that week, then four days the following week, and then a full week of school. The gradual start allows staff and students to ease into the school year transitioning from summer. The early childhood classes really appreciate this gradual approach as the children are exhausted at the end of the day, those first few weeks while they acclimate to a new setting and schedule. Please consider a gradual start this fall rather than the first week being five full days beginning August 30. The return in April. Tonight, I am writing to share that as a parent and public school teacher, I am in full support of a full return to school, including all grades pre-K through 12, starting April 5. At the last school committing, the school committee meeting, there was a conversation about science and for every study, there's an opposite study to refute it. So tonight, I'm sharing my experience. First, I have been teaching first grade students all year. I've held hands, helped wipe their face, changed dirty masks, tied shoes, helped them put on snow gear, open snacks, and most importantly, created a fun, safe learning environment. There has been zero viral transmission in our school. Next, St. John's High School, just a few miles away in Shrewsbury, has been in session all year where about 1,000 young men are in person, full time each day. Their plan is parallel to what Superintendent Zangy recommended for our initial reentry plan last fall. The most simple rule to follow for our son is if he's sick, he stays home. Our son has had to stay home and quarantine once this school year as he was considered a close contact, sitting next to someone in class that tested positive. He did not contract a virus, followed the protocol, and returned back to campus. I reached out to Headmaster Alex Akira this past Sunday. And to quote him, "To date, we have no evidence of transmission on campus to either students or adults." And I believe we are the largest high school in the state to be fully in person. We have 90% of our students on campus and have run a pretty full extracurricular and athletic program. Again, there has been zero transmission at St. John's High School. Things are opening up and we are moving forward. This is an exciting time many, many teachers have been waiting for. Just yesterday, the CDC came out with new guidelines regarding non-mask wearing for people that are fully vaccinated. There are many educators who are excited to teach a full classroom of students in person very soon. Lastly, I encourage parents to consider having your child take the bus. This will ease the drop off and pickup line. Our own children have been taking the bus to and from school since the start of the school year. And again, there has been zero viral transmission on the bus. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Marie. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next on our list, we have Paula Melville. Paula, if you're out there, you're still on mute. Not sure if you, there we go. Okay.
Sorry, I had a connection issue.
That's okay. Zoom seems a little, seems to be, it seems to be a Zoom issue tonight. So thank, thank you for joining us and you have, you have your three minutes.
So good evening. I asked to speak to you tonight as a mother of a first grader and also a public school teacher. Due to the urgency and severity of the situation in our district with the inequality of both models at the elementary level. Although I'm in favor of bringing students back full time as soon as possible, we need to talk about an overarching situation has been ignored by school committee to prevent another educational disaster from happening. During the last school committee meeting, we were told that we are in a better position than other districts around us. This is factually incorrect. I have gathered information from Marlboro, Hudson, Rafton, Framingham, Shrewsbury, and Worcester, and they all have way more live interaction and explicit instruction than we do. I can provide examples of student schedules demonstrating what remote and hybrid should look like according to DASSI guidelines. It includes live interaction in a different way than what has been provided to us. And it has been like this in all these districts I mentioned since the beginning of the school year, which makes me believe that these are examples of districts that prepare their staff for this situation throughout last summer. The first problem we had was the administration failure to implement the promised ingenuity program for remote only students at the elementary level. The second one was the school committee approving the bridge and hybrid programs with minimal life instruction. Consider the school committee's most important duty should be to make every decision with the best interest of the students in mind. I come to believe you have failed us twice so far. When they had to add hours to the models after the break, they added hours but with minimal explicit instruction, which is required to be in compliance. The elementary students have no live math for three days. Writer's workshop, it's writer's story with beginning, middle, and end. There's no brainstorming, no scaffolding, no direct instruction. Writing like reading and math must be explicitly taught and modeled many times to promote student achievement. The math activities on the days they are home are pages from the student workbook. It only makes math look hard, not appealing. The hour-long, non-interactive webinar they added on Wednesdays for the elementary kids, it's clearly not planned with elementary students in mind. The Zoom snack time and social time is another wasted opportunity to provide interactive, fun, and engaging remote instruction, which again, the administration probably didn't prepare the teachers to do and or didn't ask them to. When they said we came a long way, it's simply not true. I still do not understand why they could not do a better job with the two models we have. If you have three first way teachers, one should teach cohort A, one should teach cohort B, one should teach fully remote, but all full time. Young learners need the emotional connection with one teacher and not four or five of them teaching different subjects. Maybe you have an insider insight that I have missed. What causes the emotional problems and the academic huge loss that I see with my daughter and hear from many parents is the lack of explicit instruction. When destruction is live, daily, motivating, the loss is much smaller. This is a tone that must be set by the administration. Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you for sharing. Next on our list, we have Jessica Degliabardi. I apologize if I did not pronounce your last name appropriately.
It's okay. Degliabardi. Yeah. So my name is Jessica Degliabardi. I actually grew up in Boylston. It's Jessica Moore. I attended Boylston Elementary School in Toronto. A few years back. Thank you so much for letting me talk this evening. I apologize. I'm still at work. So dear Boylston Berlin School Committee, as a family nurse practitioner at the Edward M. Kennedy Community Health Center in Grapebook Valley in Worcester, all the articles and medical updates and studies I have learned over the past year make me very concerned over the decision you have for you tonight. Do not envy this decision with the recent mandate from DASSI and also the many calls from parents to return the children to school full time. I've spent countless hours trying to stay up to date for my patients and my family, and I want to share some of the data you can make, you can make an informed decision. I've included the links to the supporting evidence and tried to put the dates in the website that were last updated or when the data was published, in case you wanted to have a longer read of the data. It's a decision that should be based on scientific data and not in political or parental persuasion. In summer 2020, the superintendent's plan was rejected to return the children with three to six foot of spacing and one week on and one week off plan based on the data from Israel. As a district, you decided that the data supported six feet as a minimum for safe spacing. And due to our number of students, a hybrid plan was adopted. The CDC and many other agencies are calling for the return of children to school, but with requirements of six feet of spacing. The CDC reports that the core principle for physical distancing is to have a school policies that implement structural interventions to promote physical distance of at least six feet between people. And this was, this website was from the CDC, updated February 26, 2021. Many would argue that the data has shown that in-person schooling has been safe and that has been without the new variants. With the induction, introduction of variants that are more contagious and more deadly has more and more research is showing there's been an increase in children hospitalizations admissions and, and rates positive cases with these new variants. And this is a quote. "The overall picture is one of something like 40 to 60% increase in hospitalization risks, risk of deaths." Neil Ferguson, an epidemiologist and scientific advisor to the British government, said in an interview on Saturday, which was in February. Referring to the tight restrictions on socialization that are in fact across Britain, he said, "It reinforces the policy measures in place." It also shows pediatric missions for COVID are rising. As I mentioned, it's due to the, is it due to the new variants? We just don't know. From the CDC MMWR report, January 22nd, studies have consistently shown that children, adolescents, and young adults are susceptible to SARS. Children and adolescents have lower incidence and fewer severe COVID outcomes in adults, which we are very thankful for. Over 19 cases in children, adolescents, and young adults have increased since the summer 2020 with weekly incidents higher in each success of week. What are the implications of public health practice to enable safer in-person learning schools and communities that adhere, strictly adhere to multiple mitigation strategies? So we have all made sacrifices and we want our children to be in school. It's been a very long year, and I know that's the understatement of the year. I just want to make sure it's done safely. We've made it so far and we don't want to be overly optimistic and misjudge the risk of the new variants. The UK variant is projected to be dominated by March 23rd in the United States. And we have to be cautious as we don't know what this will mean and pray it doesn't mean another surge, although there are those predictions. My daughter's a Boylston Elementary School. She continues to struggle with home learning. I agree with the prior person that was talking, the prior mother. The bridge program, we tried for two weeks when cases were increasing after Thanksgiving and I didn't feel it was acceptable. The only way that I've allowed my daughter to return to hybrid is because she wears pediatric KN85. Her teacher keeps the windows open throughout the day, throughout the winter. And I dismissed her to my car to eat lunch the days that she's in school. I decided to do this after reading that COVID stays in the air for 13 hours. And unfortunately, I've not been able to locate that article again after reading it that night. Not allowing her to eat in the gym might sound a bit over the top and it does to me when I say it. But we've not done indoor dining for over a year. Why would I feel it's safe to do at school? There's three other classes in the gym with no purifier, closed doors, and a ventilator fan on the top, but that's drying air from within the school that could possibly have COVID. Outdoor lunches should be the norm and not the exception in the spring. I also included some links and I was, wanted to just share the first one. It's from the New York Times, which had some graphics about different ventilation scenarios within the classrooms. And I did forward this to the superintendent and to ACE. And it just shows really six feet is the absolute minimum because it really doesn't matter after a period of time. So I would really like the six feet to stay if possible. Is there a way to share the screen? I know I had talked with.
Jessica, public comments are primarily for statements. And particularly as we, we have a, we have a few folks that behind you for public comment standpoint, and I want to make sure we allow appropriate time for everybody. So I hope we won't share at this ti, at this point in time.
Okay. Can I just say a few, two more sentences to wrap up?
Sure.
All right. So I wanted to thank you in general. I do appreciate all the efforts on ACEs and the superintendents and all the teachers. I know they're making extreme effort. I really think that we can do this, but I want to make sure we can do it safely. And so I am concerned with the decreased spacing. So I hope that we can do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you for sharing.
Can I just add, Jessica, I have that simulation in my presentation, so I should thank you upfront for sending it to me.
Thank you. It's, yeah, pictures worth a thousand words. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Okay. We had, well, I had two hands up. Oh, all right. So we got one up. Okay. So it's already taken care of. So the first hand I, I saw up was Eileen Rodman, and it looks like she's already been promoted to a panelist. So Eileen, you are next on the list. Jen Grant, you will be next. I'm thinking Zoom is a little bit slower now in terms of moving folks into panelist position. So please bear with us.
Apologies. I just joined and I don't need to comment, but thank you for acknowledging me.
Oh, okay. No worries. All right. Then the next hand I had seen up in our list was Jen Grant. If Christie, if you're able to promote Jen to panelist spot, please. Hi, Jen, you're up.
Hi, I just wanted to take a minute and thank everybody. We've got a kindergartner in the school systems this year at Berlin Memorial. And she wasn't a daycare system before, so she was used to the structure of everything, but obviously COVID mask wearing. It was much different this year. She's been fortunate enough to be working with four days for some math struggles this year. We've had a couple of mornings and it's been a rough drop off. And I have to say, Mr. Campbell and some of the teachers, everybody has just beyond exceeded our expectations on, never mind a normal year, but in a pandemic, I know I go to work every day. I deal with the public. I have to deal with all the, you know, the backlash from some of this. And I can't thank you guys enough for trying to give the kids some sense of normalcy because it's done, you know, world of wonders for our daughter. She's excited for school. She loves the teachers. She loves the programs. And I know you guys sometimes get a lot of backlash, but you know, we truly, truly appreciate what you do every single day. And just wanted to thank you for it because I know it can't be easy at all. So just really thank you from, from the bottom of my heart and my family for everything you do.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, I'm seeing one, one more hand up Christine Stow, just processing standpoint. This will be our last public comment for the evening. Christie, if you're able to promote Christine to panelists, please. Hi, Christine. Go ahead.
Hello. Can you see me, hear me?
You're all set.
Thank you all for taking the time to allow public comment tonight. I had sent an email to the school committee earlier this week and then some friends of mine and a few committee members asked me to publicly speak tonight about my email that I sent to you so it could be put into public comment. So I'll read my, my little email. I said, "Good afternoon. I appreciate the challenging role of being part of a school committee." Something I would not want to be part of. So I appreciate you all doing this. Being part of this important group has been difficult over this past year. Indeed, I suspect you all continue to have to make hard choices going forward over the next year. So I sent the email to thank you all for your service to our community. I wanted to also share my perspective of this past year and my family because I thought that's what you guys were kind of looking for. I am a pediatric nurse practitioner in primary care. I deal with SARS-CoV-2 every single day. I dress in full PPE for every child that has any symptoms on the CDC list. I triage calls every day from frantic families trying to obtain emergency medical and mental health services for their children whose social emotional stability has been compromised by this public health crisis. I do three to four video visits a day for symptomatic children who don't want to leave their homes or just want to discuss how to get tested. So I intimately know how hard this has been over the last year. This is why I'm asking you to make this hard decision, send our children back to full time in-person learning as soon as possible. I can't estimate how much learning loss has been occurred over the last year, but I can tell you how many children have suffered from weight gain, anxiety, depression increases, as well as food insecurity issues. It has taken over my medical practice. I looked over the DCE and CDC recommendations this weekend, and I think we can do this in our school district. I really do. Layered mitigation approach can be achieved in all of our three schools. Full in-person instruction of elementary school students, regardless of community infection, is safe and achievable. Vaccines are not a prerequisite to returning to in-person learning. I would love to see a comprehensive testing program for students and staff that recognize that this may be more difficult to implement. So that is my professional perspective on this. But lastly, I will advocate for the Toronto class of 2021 senior class. They have been separated from each other, their educators, their teammates. I have, I see most of them trying to make most out of this crisis. They're planning class events. They're planning prom informal gatherings. But their last year and a half of high school has been significantly interrupted. Please consider getting the middle high school students back to full time as well, in-person learning as soon as logistically possible. It breaks my heart to watch my senior write off his last days of high school. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Kristi Stillah, RN MS CPNP. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will conclude public comments. Again, thank you to everybody who not only sends communications but takes the time to get up here in front of everybody and share their thoughts and their information. It is to, to everybody's communication. It's extremely valuable and it is. It is to to everybody's communication. It's extremely valuable and it is information. Trying to remember who who mentioned it, but it is information that we want because we are making a tough decision. So thank you all for for providing that. As it relates to response to any of the communication. Unless a committee member has an immediate response, they would like to share. And some of you might have taken some notes. We could potentially share that response to some of the communication during our deliberation session later on in the agenda. So I'll ask for you guys to hold on to kind of that response, maybe take a note and respond at that time. So we can sort of kind of manage and control our discussion here. I don't want us to go down a path too early in the evening. Unless so unless somebody has an immediate response that they want to share right now. Everybody's okay with that. We'll just we'll move through our gender to Jeff's. Okay. Alright, my three on our agenda this evening is approval of payroll payable warrants. I'll just get my typical thumbs up from the crew. Everything's going okay there. Okay, thank you all. Could I please have a motion to approve the items on our consent agenda as as presented? I got a motion from Angela. Who was the? Laurie, we get a second. Okay. Any discussion deliberation?
I just wanted to thank the writers of the minutes, particularly the policy subcommittee minutes. That helps make it so much more clear to me when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at the information on the drive. So thank you for that.
Agreed. Okay, roll call vote. Angela?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi, sorry.
It's okay. Mike?
Hi.
Lori?
Hi.
Keith? Is that a nicer? Are you on mute there Keith? Can I get a quick eye Keith?
Alright, sir.
Thank you. Sorry. Appreciate that. I'm an I as well. Okay. Alright, the next item on our agenda is communications. I have a couple of my own and then I'll ask the other members of the committee if they have any communications. One thing, thank you all. There's been a number of communications from parents throughout both communities. Want to thank you for sending those in. I want to reiterate, if some of them have questions in them, some of them don't. If there are questions in there that don't get answered this evening and or don't get answered via someone from the administration staff. Please make sure you, you know, reach back out to myself and make sure that that question gets answered. I don't want, to be quite honest, it's quite a few emails, quite a few questions. We're managing through the process. So if you feel like a question of yours was not answered, I do not want that to occur. So if you could please make sure you follow up with me and I'll make sure all those questions get answered, please. You know, we received a number of communications. Some around, you know, a lot around the item of the back in school plan. A lot of couple around the election information item on the agenda this evening. I do want to recognize one of the, one of the communications that came in. As it was, as it contained a petition that went around. That was managed at least by Jessica Bork. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because a lot of you signed that petition and put your names out there. We can't put out obviously every single name, but I want to recognize that we saw that petition. So if you sign that, I want you to know that that we as a school committee have seen that petition. And thank you all for doing that. And obviously, thank you Jessica for coordinating that and making sure that was, you know, given to us. My last communication from my perspective is the, a group of us from school committee. Did meet with some union members in over the last week. Typically, that's a process where we allow our, our union has, you know, direct access to the school committee for the purposes of just, you know, sharing with us thoughts and in conversations. Typically, we don't respond and share the feedback from those conversations as it's done done privately. But we did talk to the school, we did talk to those members if they wanted anyone from the school committee to. Provide some feedback or at least sort of consensus of kind of how that conversation went. We had an excellent conversation. And what I will do is I'll ask the other two members if they want to add anything. But the two major pieces that stuck out to me from our discussion with the union members is. They continue to want to, you know, share with the community, share with the the committee that they do want to be back in school. They do agree with the sentiments that the the work around the hybrid situation is much greater to them. And they do want to give everything back in. But with all that being said, they want to, the other piece that I think they wanted to make sure from a committee perspective that we shared is. You know, they're concerned about the students as well when everybody goes back, right? From the sense of though we'll be going back from a full-time perspective. It's not going to be the same. It's not even going to be the same as hybrid. They're asking for parents patience and understanding as we move back to to get these kids into full into full, obviously a full pattern. You know, be patient because, you know, for some folks, it might get worse. For some folks, it might get better. All these problems that we're concerned about socially, emotionally, all these the health things aren't going to be solved. You know, day one, getting every kid back into school full time, right? So it's their goal, their teachers, they're obviously going to do the best they can for every student. You know, but their concern i- is as well as what's that going to mean for the students when everybody's back in school? So those were the two big, I I felt, takeaways from the conversation. I'll quickly ask Keith and Mike if they had anything else they wanted to share in that perspective.
I see Keith is still on mute, so I'll I'll go first. Yeah, just like what you said, Jim, I did promise the union on that call that I would advocate for them to the parents. So parents, when we do go back, whenever that is, it's not going to turn around on day one. Whether it's social, emotional, academic. I think we heard from the principals' last meeting. I think John, you told it to us. Susan, you confirmed it. It's going to take years to fix the problems that we've caused with the academics here. So, yeah, whenever we do go back, it's not going to turn around right away, but have patience. They do want to get back to it. They're working way too hard right now. Doing three jobs pretty much. And so I feel for them there. I want to do whatever I can do to make their life easier. So, yeah, I promised them I would do that today. And so there you go.
Thank you, Mike. Keith, anything to add?
Yeah, one thing I took away from it that I really didn't. And I, and I'm shocked that I didn't think about this before was. Everybody goes back and one of the things that they that they have to worry about is. Being the police of mask and keeping people separated, which is an added thing for them. To to teach in. And. That was an interesting perspective of that, that's, that's. But I really took away from that and I, you know, I I think people got to really consider that, you know. That a lot of people don't really think about that when they think about like, you know, these teachers are there to teach, not police kids from wearing their mask and keep them far apart. You know, or whatever the guidelines are. So that was an interesting perspective. So that's, that's one thing that I, everything else, I think you said Jimmy. So that's just one thing I wanted to add. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Keith. That was the last item I had for communication. Any other school committee members have a communication they would like to share at this part of our agenda? I am hearing none. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Alright, we're moving into our report section. Obviously, first up on our list is Superintendent Zangy, who's going to talk about and present his reentry plan. So I just want to, from school committee perspective, what I want to do right now is quickly just, let's, you know. Procedurally, just make sure we're all on the same page procedurally, how I expect this discussion to go. Not expect, but how I I hope that this conversation goes. I apologize. We're going to, I I talked to Jeff, we're going to allow Jeff to do his presentation completely without asking questions. Okay, so if you have questions throughout Jeff's presentation, please write those down. Please hold those on to the end of Jeff's presentation. I don't, what I don't want to do is have us go in a lot of different directions during his presentation and take Jeff off of his, off of what his goal is to accomplish this evening, okay? Procedurally, from a discussion standpoint, we. Any questions that we have for Jeff and or anyone else from an administrative perspective that we want to talk to as it relates to the reentry plan? Those questions, we can have immediately after Jeff's presentation. What we won't be doing is any type of deliberation or school committee discussion around the plan. Without procedurally going through the appropriate measures. Once we've completed the, the question and answer phase after Jeff's presentation. What we will do then as as in to go into deliberation, we'll need to have a motion to approve that plan and a second to move that plan. Okay, a second to that that motion. That will move us into our deliberation phase. That doesn't mean we're going to vote, doesn't mean anything else. We then are just going to, as a school committee, deliberate, discuss, maybe more questions, I don't know. But we need to go through that procedurally at that point to make sure that we've accommodated all the, you know, the the requirements, okay? If we hit to, if we get to a point where. We as a committee would like to make an amendment to any of, to anything, to the motion and or the plan. That amendment gets made inside the deliberation. We will work through that amendment each one and if, because if we have, if we end up in a situation where we have multiple motions for amendment. We need to talk through and close out each motion for amendment prior to moving forward to another one. I'm asking as a school committee if we can have a deliberation and open that up. I'd like to, if we are, if we do have any amendments this evening, motions for amendments to Jeff's plan. I'd like to see if we can narrow that down and make sure we have the discussions in the deliberation. And move to an amendment that we we are all comfortable with versus anything else, but we're going to see how that goes. So. Please make sure you write down all your questions and we will allow Jeff to work through his reentry plan. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you all for attending. See, we got one hundred ninety-four attendees. So I'm going to present tonight our. Reentry plan, reentry two point O. I have a slideshow that we think summarizes the plan. And then I have a quick closing statement and then we'll take some questions. So Christie, could you just put up the first slide, please? Also, I want to let you know that once this vote occurs, if the the plan gets a thumbs up. We will release the plan to the public tomorrow. And I'll go through that as we go along. Good, thank you. Let me just, I'm just going to close out of this. Okay, thank you. Could you go two slides ahead to the developers? One more, okay. We think we've had, you know, a collaborative experience with this plan. We've had the administration involved, the Berlin Boylston Educators Association, parent representatives, and also our nurses. So we think we have buy-in for the plan. So timeline, if you could just go to the next slide. Before I start that timeline. I'm going to read to you a correspondence from the Commission of Education came out today at one forty-five. So we've, we've modified the plan a little bit, but we did it to reflect. This correspondence. Dear superintendents, charter school leaders and leaders of collaboratives, on March fifth, twenty twenty-one. The Board of Elementary and Secondary Education adopted amendments to the student learning time regulations on an emergency basis. These amendments provide me with the authority to determine when hybrid and remote models will no longer count towards meeting the required student learning time hours. Consistent with these amendments, the following, in following consultation with medical experts and state health officials. I'm exercising that authority as follows. Elementary school phase grades K through five for elementary schools. Hybrid and remote learning models will no longer count toward meeting the required student learning time hours as of Monday, April fifth, twenty twenty-one. As a result, districts and schools are required to shift their learning model for elementary school. Grade levels to full-time in-person instruction, five days per week, effective Monday, April fifth, twenty twenty-one. Middle school phase, grade six to eight for middle schools. Hybrid and remote learning models will no longer count towards meeting the required student learning time hours as of Wednesday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. As a result, districts and schools will be required to shift their learning model for the middle school grade levels to full-time in-person instruction, five days per week. Effective Wednesday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. High school phase, grades nine through twelve. We will announce the details and timing of the high school phase of the plan in April. Districts will be provided at least two weeks in advance of the date for high school students to return to full-time in-person instruction. But should start making such plans now. Sincerely, Jeffrey C. Riley, Commissioner. Okay, I just wanted to read that. That came out today. So let's take a look at our timeline. Our goal is to return to school elementary, obviously, April five. And middle and high school, no later than April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure what the commissioner's timeline will be for the high school. But typically, the logistics, logistics of getting a high school going are much, much more difficult in our case. We have a middle and high school in one building and we think we can accomplish that by, we will accomplish that by April twenty-sixth. Between March twelfth and March twenty-sixth. Parents will be receiving a student questionnaire that's related to return to school, busing. Things of that nature that will be collected, reviewed by the administrators and. That questionnaire is due, we're going to send that out this week on the twelfth, which is Friday. It'll be due back on the twenty-second. We have some things going on between there. I'll talk about this a little bit later. Between March twenty-ninth and April second. These classroom assignments will be created in the physical spaces we configured. And parents will be notified of any changes in the classrooms. Remember, when we, when we schedule buildings, anytime of the year, we try to balance the classroom. So right now, we don't know how many people will be coming back full-time and how many will opt for the remote option. And so we will have to balance those classes. And that's important for parents to know that they may not get the same teacher that they had at the beginning of the year. April five, elementary school will return fall. And then what we are planning for on April nineteenth through to the twenty-third, which is the vacation week. Is to set the high schools and middle school back up and the cafeteria. Those buildings take a lot more time to get settled. And on Monday, April twenty-sixth, we plan on a full return for the middle and high school. We've broken this plan up into really six seconds, six sections. Safety and safety precautions and considerations, learning models and sped services, transportation. Logistics, conditions for reentry and next steps. So I just wanted to show you, we're going to cover each one of those bullets separately. The first one we're going to cover is safety precautions and considerations. Can you go to that slide, Christine? Great, thank you. In order to go in fall, we're going to have to have distances between three and six feet in the classrooms. Now. If you remember from the fall presentation in the elementary schools, we had four and a half to six plus feet. And we're confident that we won't have, we hope all students will, will, will return. But we know that's, you know, that's not possible. So chances are we'll have at least four and a half feet to six feet in all the classrooms. Cafeteria is a different story. We must remain at six feet because students will not have masks on. So there are a lot of safety, additional safety precautions will be taken in, will be taken into place in the cafeteria. Masks will continue to be worn at all of the buildings and they'll still have mask breaks. All of the hygiene and safety measures will remain in place and then some, talk about those in a little bit. And and we got to remember that when we bring back all of our students. It's not going to look like, you know, September twenty nineteen. Because remember, we got to get all our students back in, but we have to maintain the safety precautions that have been set in place. So there's a lot of work to be done, but we we'll get there. I talked about reassignments of classroom. I do want to mention. The parent who spoke earlier, Jessica, she sends stuff all the time, lots of great, great references. the parent who spoke earlier, Jessica, she sends stuff all the time, lots of great, great references. We do have air cleaners in each of the elementary schools. We put air cleaners in each of the classrooms and high-performance air cleaners that we were really looking at it for the long term and we knew that at some point COVID would be over, but students still have allergies, they're older buildings. And so we thought, we were thinking in the long term, we could get a a plan that allows us to change those filters on a regular basis and and keep the air as clean as we can. Kristy, do you have that scenario? I'd like to, I'd like to put that up if we can before we move on. I'm gonna read to you, let me, oh yeah, hold on, don't start it yet. I'm gonna read to you what the simulation is for us. This is right out of just the exact text. "The simulation was created using a three-dimensional model of a New York City public school classroom with specific inputs for the size of the room and the number of occupants and their location of the room, among other factors. Nearly 800,000 points of data were sampled from a simulation of airflow in the room. Two values, contaminant concentration as parts per million and velocity as meters per second were measured for each point every 15 seconds over 15 minutes. The animation shows a subset of this data." Well, the first thing I noticed when I look at that is they, there's 30 kids in that classroom, so that's a typical New York public classroom. And by the way, they have a mandate that, and I didn't realize this, each classroom has to have at least one window that opens. So we're in pretty good shape here. So if you just start scrolling through that, so now they clear out the classroom, oh, stop right there. Okay. Keep going now. The simulation uses now nine students with masks six feet apart. If you just keep scrolling, Kristy. Stop right there. Okay, what would demonstrate, what they're trying to demonstrate here is that each person in the classroom, this is what a mask on, at that, in this particular classroom, they estimated each person breathes in about 3% of what other people breathe out. That's not, that's not a pretty thought on the best day, but but, and you can see what this simulation looks like. Now, the next thing they did is they put that infected student down in the bottom. And stop right there. You can see on the right-hand side, the concentration of contaminants from less to more and you can see what happens right there. Stop, Kristy, thank you. You can see that with masks on, if that student is infected in that closed room, what that looks like after 15 minutes. Okay, scroll through a little bit more. First, do we have a first scenario, Kristy? Oh no, okay, that was it. Okay, we're good, thank you. Okay, in this scenario, they open the window. Now, this is why windows are so important. Now, the Health Department recommends air changes between four and six an hour in a classroom. They estimate by opening a window, they get around four. So now this scenario is the same infected student with the window open. Okay, now you can see that it's not perfect, but it greatly reduces the amount of contaminants in the air from when that window was closed, but still, they estimate that's about four and we wanna get to six. So the next scenario, Kristy? Okay, in this one, they have a fan in that window blowing in and they have an air cleaner in the back left-hand side of the room. Go ahead, Kristy. All right, you can see now that that greatly reduces the amount of contaminants in the air if we have an infected person. We do the scenario and I wanted to show you this for one reason. We encourage our teachers to open the windows. In a cold day, we have ventilators in those rooms, which are basically those things down under the windows. And on a cold day, those provide the heat. They suck in air from the outside and they're responsible for about four turnover, roughly, when we did our test, about four turnovers of air an hour. The air cleaners in those rooms, the ones we bought, give us an additional two turnovers of air an hour. Now, not all teachers have fans, but again, we can provide those if if the teachers want, if the teacher wants it. But it highlights the importance of keeping those windows open, which sometimes when it's cold out is a little difficult, because when you open the window and you let in very cold air, if it's different than the temperature of the room, it interferes with the heating system. It interferes with those ventilators and the ventilators don't work properly. So they essentially fight each other. You have a window that provides four turnovers an hour and then you have a ventilator when it turns on that does exactly the same thing. So it really highlights the need to to do this safely is one of the reasons when we put this plan together, we try to push it out as far as we possibly can so that the weather be, you know, warm enough that we could actually get those windows open, put the fans in and continue to run those air cleaners. It also highlights the need to get at least a teacher vaccinated. I know it's not one of the things that's recommended by the CDC, but or by some of the, you know, you know, like Dr. Fauci, but we think it's important. So Kristy, thank you for that. Can you go back to the, to the? Thank you. Learning models and sped services. At the elementary school, we plan to have two models, a full-in model and a full-remote with live stream. It's one of the things we've been working on. We've spent a lot of time on it. We've spent a lot of money, as you're gonna see, trying to make this work. I know some of the parents who spoke tonight and, and you know, we don't disagree with them. Some of like the Bridges Program, Edgenuity, as hard as we tried, they really didn't match up to to our expectations. We'll be doing away with the Bridges Program at the elementary school. Full-in person, the full-remote, the 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 student who who opts for that will, it'll be like they're in the classroom, they'll have contact with their teacher during the day, during all of the classes. We think it's gonna be much better than the Bridges Program. Middle and high school, we have three, we're gonna have three models there. We're gonna have a full-in, we're gonna have a full-remote with live stream, which is gonna be just like the elementary school model. Excuse me, we're also gonna have the Edgenuity. Now, Edgenuity, there are students who are in there and they're successful with it. So if you're in there, if you're in Edgenuity and you wanna stay in Edgenuity, you have that option. If you're in Edgenuity and you wanna come out to full-remote, just the live stream, you can do that. If you're in Edgenuity and you wanna come to full-in, you can do that. What you can't do is go into Edgenuity anymore. There are, you know, we've, we've already budgeted for the, budgeted for the students that are in there. We'll continue. If they like it, they can stay in. But we really don't want students into that, in that program anymore. Again, it really, it wasn't bad, but it did not meet our expectations. And then the special education, a full-in person, we're gonna have a full-in person in a remote with live stream. I would suggest if there's any questions about this, you you contact the principals. Again, they're gonna, I'll talk about the they're gonna, next week, they're gonna have town halls, actually within a couple of weeks. Or you can contact Mrs. Mona, our Director of Pupil Personnel for any of those issues, because they do tend to be very, very specific to the student and the family, so. But there will be a full-in option and a a remote with live stream option. All of the models, five days a week. And what we're gonna offer here is a five-day transition. We're trying to, we're trying to make sure that parents get all of the information they need before they make a decision, but we fully realize that maybe the student gets into the full-in and they're still a little bit anxious or they go to the remote and they think, you know, I really wanna be in school. So we're gonna have a five-day grace period where you can, if you're in one, you can transition to the other. We're really running out of runway here for this year, so we're not gonna allow any more than that. So that's learning models and sped services. Transportation? Fortunately, the capacity limitations were lifted for elementary school and they were partially lifted for high school and middle school, but for us, because we're not a high prevalence community, they've been fully lifted and so on the buses, masks are gonna be worn, windows are gonna be open at least two inches as part of the guidelines. Now, we can't avoid that. I know in the fall, we had some parents call of elementary students and say, you know, it's really cold on the bus. We do have to abide by the guidelines, so at least for the first month or so, we, you know, dress accordingly, because it may be a little cold. We will have, the guideline suggested we have some kind of, you know, disposable ponchos or something for our students, so we will have those. We're gonna try to keep them out of the rain, obviously, if it starts raining. But, but, but again, maybe they get a little wet. We're gonna do our best to make sure that doesn't happen. And we anticipate running normal routes. We're not gonna date any extra routes or buses or anything like that. If you want a copy of the new guidelines, you can please contact Kristy in the central office and she will send you those. And so you can take a look at them yourself. Logistics. We include this so you can see that we don't just snap our fingers and we have to move into school and we just get to move in. We have roughly, roughly, some of these are placeholders, but we have roughly $70,000 of of hiring, purchasing of additional PPE, purchasing of technology, hiring. We had some staff members that retired, for example, and didn't fill those spots because we didn't need them up until now. So we still have a fiscal responsibility to the district and we thought we could, you know, save some money until we're ready to need them and now we do need them. So I won't go through line by line, but you can see that it's not as easy as as some may think. It takes, it takes, it'll take roughly two to three weeks to get our schools ready, ready to go. So, and so I just want, I just, we include that in here just to give you some, you know, some kind of small idea of what it takes to reopen these schools. Conditions for reentry. Reduction in cases, which we're obviously seeing, and then staff vaccinations. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something for you here before I go on with this. This is from the plan, this is from the actual plan. It's on page eight. Sunday K, staff vaccination appointments. "The district will help schedule vaccination appointments for staff that wish to participate in this option. Personal appointments may also be made individually by staff members. For staff members who are unable to get vaccinated before a full return is implemented, additional safety precautions will be considered upon request. The district's commitment to providing opportunities for staff vaccinations will continue beyond the return date to school and throughout the remainder of the 202021 school year." So we think it's important. We've made a commitment to it. We will do our best. Now that we have that April 5th date, we will do our best to focus our attention on the elementary schools and helping them get vaccinated. If we, if, if it's possible to to get a group of teachers scheduled on one day for vaccination, parents might hear me say that that day will be a asynchronous remote day, which allows us to release teachers so they can at least be vaccinated. And then we know there's, there's, you know, the inevitable is that we have to come back to school and we fully realize that all teachers may not be vaccinated fully, have full protection by that time. But there's a balance and and we're okay with that, but our commitment to the teachers doesn't stop when we come back to school. So if we, we come back to school and as a teacher who has not been vaccinated, they get an appointment. They can't do it on a Saturday. It's during the week. We will, we will release them and get coverage for them to allow them to leave the building to to be vaccinated. The next steps. So we're gonna send out this questionnaire on March 12th, which is Friday. And then between March 12th and the date you have to return that questionnaire. Now, again, that's the questionnaire that asks you essentially, what model are you choosing? Are you gonna choose the bus? Are you gonna drive your students to school? Those kind of questions. Between those, that time, we're gonna have, can you go to the next slide, Kristy? We're gonna have a town hall meetings. Last time we did it as a district, but I talked to the principals and they said, you know, we think it'd be a lot, a lot more direct if we just hold them at the school level. And that really allows a parent to ask more specific questions. Obviously, not directly about your student, but directly about that school. And it's, it's gonna be more easily answered. So BSBMS will have this on Tuesday, March 16th, from 6:30 to 7:30 and Tohonto will have theirs on March 18th, between 6:30 and 7:30. We realized that there were people who have their parents, who have students in both an elementary and a middle school or high school, so we wanna make sure you can attend both. There is no need to send questions in in advance, as we did last time. The principal has just said, you know, we'll just take the questions as they come. And so just, you know, just write your question out and they will, they will call on you in order and you'll get your question answered. And I think this is gonna work out a lot better than the district-wide town hall we had last time. So that ends my presentation. I just wanna read a statement. And I have to tell you, I was listening to Tara's statement and mine has some of the same points in it, but but I can assure you, we did not collaborate on these. I wrote this one and she wrote that one, so. Here it is. "In the past year, our school district has faced challenges to learning the likes of which we have never experienced. In March of 2020, as schools closed, none of us, staff, parents, community members, and certainly our children, could ever imagine that we'd be facing not days, weeks, or even months ahead, but more than a year of a world that turned us upside down and permeated every aspect of our lives. It has been a trying time for all of us. The patience of many, even those who may typically have been proactive, has been one thin. Within this time, however, we have learned more, become innovative in our approach to teaching and learning, and collectively sought to find solutions that that may in the past have seemed insurmountable, but now have become commonplace. Through these months of reading, listening and assessing, we have learned that students are less affected by COVID than adults. We have learned that students have not lost as significant a portion of academic learning as the forecasted COVID slide predicted. We have learned that the social and emotional impact on students and adults has been devastating. And we have learned that the schools remain, even in a pandemic, the safest place for children. All of this clearly demonstrates that safely opening our schools fully is not an option, but a necessity. While we have continued and will continue to respect those families that decide to remain remote for the remainder of the year, we must fully open our schools for those who want to attend. We all want our students back now. It is important, however, that we hold paramount in opening that as safe as possible. And no matter how the State Teachers Association presents publicly through opinions and perceptions, we all know the truth. Our teachers are gonna going to, are going to go into their classrooms tomorrow and do what they do best, and that's to teach. And they will be the exact people parents want in front of their children. They will do the best to normalize a crazy world and be among only a few adults who model that for our children through their words and actions. We often engage and challenge social distancing in our schools in terms of the distance between three and six feet. The reality is that it depends, because sometimes it's less than that. Would it surprise anyone that a six-year-old might forget the adult COVID? Would it surprise anyone that a six-year-old might forget the adult COVID rules when they need attention? And that when it happens, the teacher may find themselves face to face with a child in very close proximity? And would it also not surprise anyone to know that when this happens, the teacher calmly deals with that situation rather than run back six feet from your child? These scenarios are more common than you think. And each time it happens, the teacher's first reaction is to ensure that the students need them there. Teachers know that the schools are relatively safe and that if a student is COVID positive, the transmission most likely occurred outside of school. Yet it becomes another source of stress beyond their control. Given the amount of stress the teachers internalize, in order to normalize the school environment for our students, isn't it at least reasonable to allow them the opportunity to be vaccinated before we double the amount of students in school? The big question isn't should students return to school, but when should they return to school? Well, let's do the simple math. Between now and April 26th is six and a half weeks. One week is vacation. And as I mentioned earlier, it takes two to three weeks to get our schools ready for a full open. That leaves roughly three and a half weeks for full instruction versus three and a half weeks of hybrid instruction. Now, anything's possible, but there's no fact-based argument that would suggest that three and a half weeks of hybrid will cause irreparable damage to our students' social and emotional health or academic progress beyond what we've already seen. And I realize sometimes that that may seem harsh, but at this point, we're talking about a relative scale. Now, the same can't be said about a vaccinated teacher. A vaccinated teacher will have less stress when entering the building and engaging students at distances which can sometimes be under three feet. A vaccinated teacher is going to have a job performance that will increase. A vaccinated teacher, even a COVID positive one, will most likely have less severe reaction and have a much smaller chance of transmitting the virus to other teachers and students. This creates an overall safer building for everyone. And health concerns aside, the difference between a COVID positive vaccinated teacher and an unvaccinated teacher can be the difference between two weeks out of work and two months out of work. I know this from my own experience. It's a difference between our students being without a teacher for two weeks or two months. And we love our substitute teachers, but they really aren't substitutes for our regular teachers. And budget concerns with hiring a long-term substitute teacher should not go unnoticed. We're required to pay our long-term subs that regular teachers pay. Offering our staff members the opportunity to be vaccinated will enhance the school's safety factor, ensure another blanket of security, and in turn create a better, more positive learning environment. We want to make sure that once we are in fall, we stay that way. Vaccinating staff before we re-enter fully will be another step towards mitigating academic loss and reducing the stress associated with moving in and out of learning models. Now, there's no right answer. But, but our plan strikes what we believe is an acceptable balance between what we know is ultimately the safest plan and what is inevitable, that we need to open our schools fully. And so with that, we use our school, school committee to vote this plan as presented and let us get on with the job of opening our schools in a safe and equitable environment. And with that, I'll take some questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, great. Thanks, Christie, for talking to you. Okay, I want to, from initial response, what I like to do is just go through each school committee member. Some of you may have questions. You may, you may not. I'm just, I'm going to go through the way we voted previously on our first vote this evening, just in that order, and ask each individual to ask any questions that they have. Once we've completed sort of the written down list of questions, if anybody has follow-up questions, we'll take those, those as we go. But I just want to make sure everybody has equal opportunity to have their questions asked and answered. So Angela, I'll start it off with you. If you have any questions, please.
Oh, you know, I always do, but I was hoping to go last this time. I feel like I'm so chatty. I do have a few questions, but first I want to thank the admin team for having the town halls. I think that's a great idea. And having it be a little more casual, people just voice questions there in the here and now. So thank you very much for that. I do have a couple of questions related to reading the presentation ahead of time and then Mr. Zangy, your presentation. My first one, I thought I read something about any seniors that are currently in edgenuity were to stay in that. Did I misread that?
Maybe. I'll tell you what, what we're doing. If you're, anybody in edgenuity can come out of edgenuity. They just can't go in.
Gotcha. All right. Great. Thank you. That, that's good. And then I also was a little confused about the five-day transition. Are you saying that students and families, I understand that they have like five days after a week. They could, you know, during that time, I'm, I'm home remote, but no, I want to be in class or vice versa. What about for a family that's not quite ready to be full in? It's their elementary family. It's April, May 5th. They decide, I'd like to go full in. Would that family have an opportunity to go in full in at that time?
What's the date?
On May 5th.
May 5th?
They've been full, they want, they chose a fully remote, but now after a month, they would like their elementary students to go.
No, I mean, we, we'd like to have it only be a, a five-day transition. You know, and what we're going to do upfront is, this is why we've, we've really stretched this out, had the town hall. We're sending out the questionnaire on the 12th, but we're not requiring it back to the 22nd. So we make, want to make sure upfront, we have enough information. And these transitions cause a lot of disruptions in the schools to things like, you know, lunches, groupings in the schools, busing, you know, so it's more of an issue than you would normally think. And, and I think sometimes when parents look at this, they say, well, it's only one student. Now, if I'm a 16, 17-year-old kid, I want to go in full until it's 80. And then I need to do this from my deck, you know, so that'll happen. Because I'm, I'm sure there's, there's somebody's got to, some kids got to think like me about this, you know? And so it just is a disruption to our school. It's a disruption to the classrooms, especially in the elementary, you know, teachers set up different grouping strategies. So I know it sounds kind of rigid. But we, we, we established a five-day transition. We could be talked into six or seven days, but not a month.
The only thing I wanted to add is that I did read Commissioner Riley's full guidance today, this afternoon, after it came out. And he essentially told us that school committee doesn't have a vote on the April 5th for elementary. We're required to, to do this unless we can get a waiver. And it doesn't look like our situation would qualify for a waiver. And just so the community knows, even if someone, a school district does have a waiver, they're expected to have all their students in school full in this school year. So this is definitely the direction of our state. And I do feel badly for the few families that did have hybrid like that situation and being forced to make a choice. I feel your pain. And I know, and I'm gabbing too long, but I do know from our preliminary survey that was shared with us, 79.2% of the families did want full in. So I feel like we are, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
No, you're, you're right, Angela. And at this point, we don't have a lot of choice because as the commissioner said, they're not going to count the learning time. So it essentially says, you know, they eliminate all the options except the full in. So as, as the primary model, we can still have, we can still have a remote option, a remote option. But the primary model will have to be full in. Now, the commissioner's meeting with the superintendents tomorrow. So we'll get some clarification on this. And I'm glad this came out today because I know we were thinking about this. This, this April 5th had been kicked around for a while. So we, we started to sort of plan it because we thought, you know, it's, it might, might happen. So but if anything happens between now and Friday, I'll be sure to put it in my, the weekly, weekly update.
Thanks, Angela. Susan, do you have any questions?
She's muted. You're muted, Susan.
There we go. Yeah, I know. I just, I, it wasn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get off of it. Anyway, okay. One clarification, in your report, you said that their BES is offering an hour before and after school. And it sounded like only a shorter version of that at BMS, but in the budget, it listed both of them having time before and after school. So I just wanted to clarify, is BMS also having an hour before and after school as an option?
I, they, they, it's not the same. They, they, they would put it in place to assist with the, with the expanded release times. They will need to hire somebody, but their programs are a little bit different.
Okay. But it's shorter, it's a shorter amount of time and it's, and it's more travel, bus assistance. Is that, okay?
I also should note that those programs are at no cost to the, to the, to the parents. Because these aren't your typical after-school, we're doing, you know, these enrichment programs. It's really just to, you know, just, just to help the parents with this, this expanded, you know, release time. So
Okay.
And I know the, I think the principals are going to expand on that on their town hall. So I'm sure parents are going to have some questions about how that's, well, the logistics.
Okay, great. The, I know the teachers are eligible for their vaccines. But are, are, do you know if bus drivers, cafeteria workers, other staff are eligible as well? Or do they have to wait until their age group comes up?
I think it's all, well, officially, I think it's all K through 12 work. Is what we've done is we've given them letters if they work for us. We've given them letters that says they're part of our district. We've done this with substitute teachers also because we have trouble. We have trouble with them. We have trouble finding them. We have subs that, you know, they, they, they're regular subs, but a lot of them are retired teachers and they won't come into the buildings. So we're giving them letters just saying that they, they do do work for us and they're eligible to get vaccinated.
Okay.
We want anybody who's in our schools, if they come in contact with our kids, to be, to be vaccinated. And the buses are different. They're on a different system. So I, I believe they're up for vaccination also, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
I, I've heard the bus unions are complaining that they're not, they're not up for so I, I just wondered if you had information. And the last question I have is, do you have any kind of estimates at this time as to the percentage of each school's staffing that has already been vaccinated?
I think it's roughly about 50%. I do want to have a clarification on that. I know Matt Mika mentioned it at the Boylston Town, Town Select Board meeting yesterday. I do want to assure the teachers, I know there was a little question about that in the schools. We did not release any names. We wouldn't do that. But we did release percentages and we did it for a reason. And I did authorize that. And we did it for a reason. I think there's a perception sometime that with our plans, because initially our plan said the teachers had to be vaccinated before they, we went to school. And I think, and I received some emails from parents and things that implied that, well, now you have a plan put in place where teachers are just not going to get vaccinated if they don't want to come to school. And so I just, I put those percentages out because I wanted to, to ensure the community that that's not the case. These teachers are out there trying to get vaccinated so they can come back safely. And that's the only reason I, I authorized those percentages to be released. And again, there were no names released. I wouldn't do that. We have two databases, one we keep in school and then the percentage of released. So I did forget about that. Thank you, Susan, for reminding me.
Good. Thank you.
Susan, was that it? Okay. Mike, you're next.
Yeah, to follow on to Susan's question about the vaccines, do you have an idea of how many staff are choosing not to? Just not because they want to do anything underhanded, but they just, for whatever reason, have chosen not to.
That's a good question. I don't know. I, I have no idea. I'm hoping they're all going to do it. Again, we think it's the safest, the safest route here. Again, now that we have a plan that has cutoff dates, I guess it's a moot point in terms of when we're going to come back. I think towards the end, if I, I should have a, I should be able to provide some estimate of how many, what, of what total percentages.
I don't, I don't think it's a moot point because you're saying you want everybody to be vaccinated to be safe to come back to school. But if certain teachers don't want to or for whatever reason, are you tracking that to know that, okay, now is the time to go back or not the time to go back or something? I know the deadlines are the deadlines, but you know, you're not going to have 100% of people in the school vaccinated. So it might be good to track that. And what you just said about your plan, it doesn't say that they must be vaccinated in order to come back. That's correct?
Correct.
All right. Thanks.
It says we must provide an opportunity, which is what we're doing.
Okay, yes. So the opportunity is there. It's been there for a few weeks or two weeks, maybe. Right. The opportunity is there. For elementary, April 5th is, just to be clear, the, the last date or the latest date, the commissioner has said to go back. If we chose to, we could shrink this timeline and go sooner, both for elementary and for high school. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. I just want to make sure of that.
I want to say this. We're, we're going to be pushing it to get it, to get an April 5th date done. I know that the MAS, the Association of School Superintendents, did not advocate this. We're a smaller district and we've already, you know, the, again, that data's been kicked around. So we've already started to focus our work there just in case. But really what it's going to take is to take our focus off the middle and high school, focus completely on the elementary school and get that done. So I don't see how we'd get it done, that done before the, before the April 5th date.
So I don't understand why, just being parts, a part of things like this in the past, what do you need almost a month for? I understand you would need some time if the buildings weren't open, if we were in a fully remote situation, but we're in school every day. So other than moving some additional desks in, figuring out rebalancing classrooms, what actually goes into the whole process to get back on it?
Well, that all takes time to do. In addition to that, we have hiring to do, which we're working on, that has to be done before we come back. Again, we have, we have positions that we didn't hire because we didn't need to at the time because we will only work with half the population. But we have cafeteria workers that need to be, that need to be hired. The cafeteria situation is completely different than it used to be. And everything has to be prepackaged. So we need additional workers there. We need additional sped staff to service our students. Remember, we're going to have, we're also going to have a, we're still going to have a remote population that we have to deal with. So if it's possible to come back before then, we certainly will. But it's, it, this all takes time. And in addition to the fact that we want to give parents enough time to make an informed decision about, about what choice they're going to make for the rest of the year. And so, yeah, certainly if we got it done earlier, we would, but you know, happens, we move right through it, then we'll come back early. That's, that's no question about it.
So how is that process coming along? I know at the February meeting, you mentioned, we knew this was coming. So how is that process coming along? Have you started? How far along is it? Well, I mean, parents have known since the February meeting that there would be a full remote option. There'll be a full in-school option. The only thing that wasn't known at the time was the, the exact date. So at the time was the, the exact date. So, I mean, parents have had a long time to think about this. I know we've had a conversation quite a bit here. And so how, how are you coming along with that process? Have you been interviewing? How's that going? How far along are you?
Well, we've, we've, you know, we have ads out. We've, we've been, you know, special ed physicians are very difficult to find, to find the right ones at least. And so, you know, it's difficult for me to quantify it. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would disagree that, you know, this is a whole different remote program than we had before. We, not all of our teachers were live streaming. So there was some professional development involved there. There were some negotiations with the teachers to just say, you know, we're going to move to this model and, and we kind of all need to move, move to it. That wasn't the case in early fall. All of our teachers were not doing this. I mean, it's been a learning experience. And so, you know, it's, it's moving along, but you know, we get, we have, it's, it's not a linear process. It really isn't. So, I mean, unless you've been through, you said you've been through similar processes, but unless you've been through this process, it'd be very difficult because we haven't been through this process. So-
Yeah, nobody's been through this process.
Yeah, no, it's, it's moving along. And, you know, we're, we're doing our best, as I said, to get to, to, to hit these, these timelines. You know, I'm confident we'll have, we'll definitely get to the April 5th. Again, if we can do it earlier, we will.
Yeah, you know, April 5th is three weeks away or so, four weeks away. So for the high school to hit, I think you, you do have an opportunity to get the high school Tonto back a lot earlier. I mean, I think you could, do you, do you need two weeks to, to question parents to, to get those answers back? I mean, maybe could get some time back there. But you mentioned in your, your final statement, you know, we're talking really about three and a half weeks after we talked about vacation and the timeline to come back. So you said three and a half weeks isn't a big deal in the grand scheme of things. I think it is a big deal in the grand scheme of things as to how bad we are, or how bad off we are and, and the amount of work and effort it's going to need to fix this, as the principals told us last meeting, as Susan told us. So I think that three and a half weeks would be a big bonus, a big boost, especially to high school kids who are seniors and graduating. They're going to get out of here. And, you know, their, their last year and a half has been upended, and that's going to stay with them for the rest of their life. So if we can get them three and a half weeks back, maybe we should.
Yeah, you know, Mike, yeah, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with you. I mean, I didn't say it wasn't a difficult situation. All I'm saying is that, you know, the time now, if we would have been having this conversation again back in the fall, no vaccinations and vaccination in sight, well, you already know how I feel about it. But now that the vaccination's there, we can do a safe opening. And I, I think it would be more detrimental to go in, someone gets sick and have to move out. Now, even the plan that we're suggesting doesn't guarantee that. I understand that. We could do, we could take every precaution and we could go in and something happened. So again, it's a, it's a balance, you know, like balance, like we realize we have to go back in. Let's do the most amount of safety and still get our students back in a reasonable amount of time. I know it's not the, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. I know, and the teachers wouldn't disagree with the either. It's, this is not a good situation, has not been a good situation for anybody. But I think we're so close to doing this the safe way. And I don't want to minimize, and I wasn't trying to minimize what three weeks looks like in terms of its effects on students. I realized that every minute, every day, that, that we're not in fall is an issue. And we're going to do our best. So we, we're not in disagreement about that. We're really not. It's just, you know, we're arguing, you know, gradient here. So-
I'm not arguing with you, Jeff.
No, I mean, you know, just discussing it.
All right, what, what? We'll have a beer sometime, I guess. So, so it's not, so the, the delay in getting them back is nothing to do with science, health, safety. I think your plan is pretty safe. It's just simply logistics and, you know, not having started any of this yet. That's pretty much what it is?
No, we've started it, but I, you know, every, again, the way we feel about it is every-
No, but I know you started it, but it's not, you're not delaying because of science, fear, anything like that. It's, it's basically logistics.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Lori, any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just writing a few things down. First, I wanted to thank Angela for mentioning what the commissioner put out today. I too read that and I zeroed in on the fact that, about the vote. So I appreciate you bringing that up. The other thing I really wanted to say, and, and I regret that I haven't said it sooner, um, there's a real, um, I'm trying to find the right words. There are so many people that are upset in a, a lot of things that are going on. And I feel lectures end up being the target right now. Like, they're almost like a punching bag. And it's, I hear the word union thrown around and people getting very angry. And I just wanted to say, we have a tremendous staff of teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria people. They showed up, they have gotten past a lot. Can you hear me? Oh, good. I said I was unstable, not me. I'm to say, our union has been wonderful to work with. They're, they're really good people. So I hope that the community, when they're on, you know, social media and different things realizes that these people see what you write. And as a former teacher myself, you take that personally because you put so much of yourself into that. So I just kind of wanted to make that statement. Um, you know, in that said, so that's the first thing I wanted to do is acknowledge that. That said, I feel like the high school date of returning needs to be considered. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be the 26th. I'm saying that there needs, I feel like there needs to be a little bit more discussion. I wish I would have researched more what's going on in the other districts around us, but I've heard rumors that they're going back sooner. I don't know that they're true. I think it's important. We're a very small district compared to something like Northborough, Southborough. So, you know, my recommendation would be, can we just put that on hold before we vote for sure? Not to say that it's not going to be that date, but just to hold off because we don't have a lot of information at this point. You know, the mental health of the older kids is really suffering. Their peer groups are everything. I hate to, you know, I, when I'm a school committee member, I'm looking at it as a school committee member. I'm not looking at it as a parent, not looking at it as me. But I have to say, I've watched both of my kids struggle and fumble, and it's, it's upsetting. And I, I've reached out to their teachers who have been phenomenal. The school nurse has been wonderful. I'm so grateful for all of that. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that I think that if I had a choice, I would ask that we revisit the Tejantos return date at a later time to make sure that we could. My fear is that if we vote on that, that's what it's going to be. And there might be a chance for us to get back sooner. I love the idea that Mike had of knowing who doesn't want to get vaccinated, who has been vaccinated, because it's very important that the teachers feel comfortable. But I also feel like we have a real mental health crisis on our hands.
Lori, if I can just tell you, I mean, that, if I just say this, it's not that I disagree with you. It's not. But there's a reason the commissioner put the high school date much later than the, the elementary or the, or the middle schools, because logistically, high schools are a lot different. I mean, students move around more, there's more safety issues. High schools tend to be, have higher populations. Our per, per pupil, classroom per pupil number is a lot higher in the high school than it is in the, in the, in our elementary schools. They're a lot more difficult to get reset than, than our elementary schools, where you have one teacher and one group of kids that sit with them the entire day. They don't operate in the same kind of grouping. So, you know, I'm not trying to avoid it. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. But I, I think kicking this can down the road is not a good idea. I think that, that there's more stress involved with not having a date. I'd rather you set another date. If you don't like the 26th, set another date because I think there's a lot of stress involved with not knowing a date. We got a date for the elementary school. It's the, it's the 5th. I would ask that, you know, if you don't like the 26th, you know, pick another date and take a vote on it, because it's more stressful not to know. Whatever date you give us, we will, we will, we will do our best to hit that date. And, and, you know, I'm not going to argue about it, when, whatever it is, we'll do it. We presented our case. I think, I think the case has a good balance of, of, you know, what we, what we need in terms of getting our students back to school and, and safety. I agree, there hasn't been a lot of transmission in the schools. But I also want to make sure that to the best, to the best we can, once we go in, we, we stay. Again, and nothing we're going to do is going to guarantee that. But I really would ask the committee, you know, not to kick this can down the road. You asked us to present a plan. We presented the plan. I asked that you vote on it tonight. If you want to change the date, change the date. We're fine with that. But give us a date and let us get on with this work because not knowing is worse than, you know, having a set, I'd, I'd rather have a date that's three weeks away or two days away than say, well, let, let us think about this more. I think we've all had time to think about this. We, we've done what you've asked. We presented the plan. And, and we would ask that you, you, you vote on a plan tonight.
Thanks, Jeff.
Lori, any other questions?
I don't think so. I think that, that covers it. My, just my, I wish I would have done the research of the, of the local school districts because it never occurred to me that there could be a later date, I guess. And, and again, I'm, I'm all for the teachers being vaccinated and I want them to feel safe. I, I empathize with them and I'm on their side. It's just, it's really hard when you have all of these letters from parents and you see petitions and you see surveys and they want them back as soon as possible. Just, it's a real, it's a tight spot and it's not an easy spot. And I, I recognize everything that you're saying, Jeff, and I appreciate your input. I, it's, it's very helpful.
We, we get the same, you know, we obviously, I just get the same, I, I get, I get, I'd probably get more of it than you do. And-
You probably do.
No, and I, listen, I, I, you know, you're preaching to the choir. I, I, it's not that I don't agree with you. And we will certainly do our best to, to come back as fast, as quickly as possible. But at this point, you know, I, I applaud the committee for allowing sports and extracurricular things to act, to continue. I think that's been, I think that's been big in helping our students. And I know they're suffering. I mean, listen, one, it's, one common experience we've all had is we've all been kids. So, you know, you're 16 years old and the option is come to school with your friends or stay home with your parents. I mean, I get that. You know, it's like, well, you can eat ice cream or papier-mache. You know, it's a pretty, it's a pretty easy decision. So I get, you know, the stress of, the, the stress there. And, because I don't think any kid would like that. But I think we're, we're close to doing this safely. And, and so I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree beyond the content. I just ask everybody be a little more patient.
Well, and I guess that said, I also want to thank you, Jeff, because you're very balanced. You always look at all sides. You always listen. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Lori, I think that's an excellent topic for, as we move into deliberation, discussion from school committee perspective. You know, I think you just volunteered for me to yield the floor to you to go first, to open the, open the topics. Be ready. Mr. Lewis, do you have any questions?
Uh, not, not really any questions. I mean, most of the questions I had were pretty much answered. I mean, I, I do agree that if we push the high school up a little further, but you know, I, I just pulled my calendar up. But, you know, it's, was April vacation is the third week, right? So, I mean, if we're going back the fifth with K through five, then yeah, I can understand that, you know. But Jeff, I, I understand what Jeff is calling, you know, let's set a date, let's get it done. No more thinking about it anymore. I get it. And believe me, I get it. I have, you know, and I'm sure everybody and I see there's like 200 people also listening to us talk. You know, I have a, a second grader and two sixth graders. So the emotional thing is crazy. I mean, that's, that's as a parent. And my daughter even said to me, oh, I heard that we're going to go back soon. She was excited. So I get it. You know, that's as a parent. But, you know, as a school committee member, it, as Lori said, you have to be even killed. You got to listen to everybody's, you know, and you also got to trust our administration that, that, that we, we listen, you know. You know, they've all worked hard. And I'm going to, you know, take, take what I, I believe, I'm pretty sure Jeff said it months ago, you know, when these teachers go back full time, they're going to feel like they have a part-time job because they've been working real hard, you know. And everybody that's listening as parents that, you know, want to push everything back, you have to keep that in mind. These teachers really, really want everybody to go back just as much, you know. Everybody's got to keep that in mind. I mean, you know, it's a very emotional thing right now. We're all feeling very emotional. I mean, at home, everything. So when, when you hear us talk and stuff like that, everybody has a voice. They all have their own opinion. But, you know, it, it really is, you got to find the balance for everything. And that's the way life is. And we should be teaching that to our kids. It's about a balance in life. So with that being said, you know, I, I appreciate Jeff's, that, that, what you presented. I, I think it's a great plan. Of course, I would agree with the other committees, committee members that, you know, if we could get the high school kids back sooner, I, I, I would agree with that. I would. I think that's a great thing. And I will say this, that any, anybody who works for a school system, go on CVS, you can get vaccinated. Doesn't matter whether you're a teacher or not. If you work for a school system, do it. You can do it. They're not going to ask you a question. Just do it. Okay. I, I don't, Jim, I don't really have anything else to say other than, that's all I got, man. So.
I, I have some follow-up questions and I'll, as you would imagine, I would have. And I'm going to put a couple of people on the spot and I apologize for that. Bob Conry, if you could help me out real quick, could you remind me where, and I know we've made major improvements in this statistic last year, but where we are as it relates to a per pupil spend in relation to the other districts in the state and surrounding, just surrounding districts. You know, I know that was major challenges, but, but how, you know, and I know we made some improvements, but could you quickly update me on that? And, and I'll get to why I'm asking that question.
Okay. The, the last published data is for FY '20, I believe. Boyleston's in the 25th percentile. Williamson Elementary, Berlin Memorial's in the 86th percentile, and Tejantos in the 39th percentile.
So the reason I, I ask, right, is, you know, and it's more kind of in response to, you know, some of the things brought on by parents. And I save some of my comments from, from the parent communications, right? It's very easy and we all tend to, and there's a lot of different ways to analyze and compare ourselves. You know, we all want to compare ourselves in districts around us and what other districts are doing. And the challenge I always face is, I don't know that that's an equitable way to evaluate how we are doing ourselves as a district. Are we taking into consideration, do we have the same resources as some of those schools? You, I know one parent brought up St. John's. I mean, we don't have the resources that St. John's has. And, and I know we're talking about from an educational perspective, but things that pertain to what school committee actually has oversight into, which is budget, you can start to see the downpath of how budget affects these things, right? So when we talk about budget conversations and the impact of that, right? When you think about, when we go to our town meetings and we talk about the impact, the school budget, or FinCon talks about the impact school budget has on our districts and our- when we go to our town meetings and we talk about the impact, the school budget or FinCom talks about the impact school budget has on our districts and our towns. These directly impact times like this, right? So I'm not necessarily always sure that it's fair or equitable to compare us to surrounding districts with all types of data and education and resources being so vastly different. Now, Boylston, the bottom twenty-fifth percentile, right? Just two years before that, three years, we were in the bottom eight percent, right? So we've made dramatic increases. Imagine if we were still in that position, right? So things to consider as parents and communities kind of as we move forward, as I was kinda listening to some of those things. Some of the other things I heard, um, just a reminder as it relates to sort of school committee. And, and I apologize if some of this sounds like it's, I'm taking this defensive of school committee or person. But it, we vote on and approve what is presented to us. So what was presented to us as you, educationally, uh, in the start of the year, edgenuity, bridges, all that stuff, is what we evaluated and what we were presented to. Unfortunately, yeah, we don't have the data from six months later to tell us that that program wasn't gonna work. But when we're in a position where we are a lower budget, at least from one community perspective, and we have to evaluate where we're going to focus time, money, resources, these are things that come into play, right? So these are some of the things I thought about listening to, uh, some of the comments early on that I just wanted to make sure. I saved them because I, you know, I wanted us to get through, um, our process. So, um, you know, that's just some feedback. So this school committee has done a tremendous, tremendous, regardless of, um, the lack of faith in the community, in, in our committee or concerns around how we handle certain things. I wanted to say this committee has done a tremendous job. Regardless of when you join the committee, you know, even our newer, our newest member, right, threw himself into the fire, right? In the betterment of moving the district along, right, and getting the kids back to school. So we've done a tremendous job and I just wanna say, you know, I thank you all for doing it, you know. I, I'm in, mo, moving into year five now. Angela is, I don't know, eight, nine now. I mean, and, and some of these folks, we all joined, um, way before we ever thought this pandemic was gonna happen. With the idea of bettering our communities, bettering our school district, supporting our students, supporting our families, uh, involving us, you know, none of us knew any of this was gonna happen. So I really wanna commend you all for the job you've done. I know it doesn't necessarily feel like that at times, but you've all done an excellent job. So thank you all for that. From a question perspective, well, one last, one more statement, uh, the one hour town hall, good luck principals. That's, that's very aggressive. I, I hope that works out for you, but I wouldn't, uh, don't plan on watching the Bruins games those nights, cause you might be there a little bit longer, so. But I just, you know, you might wanna readjust that, that one hour target timeframe. Uh, just so a couple, uh, Bob, um, what is the impact? Uh, one of the parents brought it up and I think Jeff talked about it a little bit. What, i- is there any impact negativity to parents choosing the full and remote, but not necessarily leveraging, uh, the bus system? Is there any impact from a budget perspective or anything moving forward as it relates to the buses? If, if parents choose to not utilize the bus service?
No, I, um, I'd say that essentially if our ridership is fairly consistent with what we have now, we should, and, and with the new guidelines, we should be fine, um, with our current buses. I did hear one, I recall one of the public commenters encouraged people to take the bus. If all of a sudden a vast number of people take it that are driving, that potentially could be an issue. So I would, um, I think that's partly why we're gonna send out a survey to find out increased ridership. But, um, you know, we can basically fill our buses up to capacity based on the new guidelines. So, you know, we, we have capacity on our existing routes. Again, unless we go above what we normally have, uh, I don't see any issues with transportation.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, my next question is actually my, my, my last question. And I hate to put this person on the spot, but Diane, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Jeff has talked a lot. I can see where this conversation's going. I can see when we move into deliberations, this conversation moving into, uh, some logistics around timeframes with middle school, high school, right? And Jeff has shared some of his concerns. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't, uh, get your input, and feedback, um, on, um, why it's important to you, you know, you're, you're in the, that building every day. So maybe we could get some feedback to you around challenges or why, what those extra three makes, three weeks would mean to, to you?
Sure. Um, so as the plan states, um, there is a lot of logistical work that will go into it. And, and the most important information is going to be for us is to know how many students will actually be physically in the building five days a week. Um, as Jeff pointed out, um, you know, our class sizes, you know, range from, you know, fifteen students all the way up to twenty-eight students. And depending upon those numbers that we get from our survey, that's gonna determine, um, where those classes can be held. And we only have a limited number of large, um, spaces in the building. Like, for instance, the auditorium, the multipurpose room, to be able to schedule classes. So we actually have to go through, um, you know, once we have those numbers, section by section, class by class, to determine, um, you know, the schedule of our classes and, and really the, the flow of the building. In our plan also, we have an additional, um, we have to add an entire lunch. So instead of having three lunches, we'll have four lunches because we're, um, we always have to plan for, um, you know, all of the lunches to be held inside, even though, you know, hopefully fingers crossed, the weather's gonna get better. I'm gonna be able to put those tents up and have students, um, eat outside. But with that, we can only have, um, you know, a maximum of, of around a hundred and twenty students, um, inside eating at one time. So we do have to add a lunch. That, you know, means that we are gonna need to, um, because our staff also does lunches for our remote population, which will still continue, um, even when we're full in. We do have to hire additional, um, you know, an additional lunch, um, cafeteria worker for that. There has to be cleaning that happens in between each one of our lunches of, um, all the tables, et cetera. Um, and then just the general flow, um, through the building. Planning how to dismiss kids, you know, cause we don't want, obviously, um, you know, five hundred and some odd students exiting the classes at the exact same time. Um, as well as planning and organizing our mass breaks um, for both inside and outside as well. Um, and then again, getting all the furniture back into, um, the classrooms. We, we did order, um, tables for our cafeterias because, um, all of the, what the students are currently eating lunch on now in the cafeteria and the gymnasium are student desks. And those student desks will have to go back into the classroom. So, you know, we ordered additional tables. Those spaces have to be set up and, you know, and, and basically tested out to make sure that we do have enough, seating for all of our students, um, who do choose to come in. So there is, there's a lot of, of logistical work, but the biggest piece of it honestly is the scheduling of the classes, once we have the number of students, um, who will be coming in full time.
Jimmy, I'm mute. Sorry. What, in case, you know, just thinking about the conversation, if we begin to look at an earlier date for middle school, high school. And understanding that the logistics of the lunchroom and some of the things around that are, are, are important, right? Because I think it's, um, it's important, one, obviously we want the kids to get back to the normalcy, right? And, and spending some time with their friends in the cafeteria and that type of stuff, or at least six feet apart in the cafeteria is, you know, important to them, right? Those are the things they're gonna look forward to going back. Is, if we were to move, is there an option of, uh, you know, moving lunch eating for a short period of time into the classrooms, meaning homeroom, scheduling of homerooms so that, you know, students are, uh, doing lunch for a short period of time in a more controlled environment while the cafeteria is prepared for, is being prepared for an earlier date back?
So with that, um, that's also a, a logistical nightmare because y- you need to have, first of all, you know, contractually, teachers have to have a half hour, um, duty-free lunch. And so we would have to cover, um, all of the teachers for that half hour. Make sure someone was in the room while the students were eating lunch, but yet the teacher had a half hour lunch. You know, and we just, we don't have the staff to do that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. You, you mentioned another good, good point early on in this question I'll ask. Uh, I'll let any of, uh, our wonderful principals, uh, respond. What do you guys see from a target timeframe? And again, you go walk out in your own backyard and it's a disaster, right? It's a, it's a wet mess. You know, what do you guys see from availability of utilizing outside space and, and timeframe from that perspective?
Um, you know, honestly, I, I would probably, I would assume, you know, I would think the first or second week, um, in April. But again, I mean, I can remember coach, when I coached softball, the week before, you know, the day before April vacation, we had a major snowstorm. Um, you know, April Fools, we had a major, you know, snowstorm and then it was, you know, sixty-five degrees. So, you know, I think, um, you know, we're coming upon the next few days of, of a nice cold stretch. I mean, a nice warm stretch and then we're gonna go drop a little bit for, um, for next week. But it's about getting that, you know, that snow melted, giving time for, um, that melt to evaporate into the ground. Um, you know, letting that ground thaw a little bit, um, but then also harden up so that we're able to actually put those tents up. Um, because we can't put them up when, you know, the grass is in the, the soil is very moist. You know, so I would hope that, you know, the first or second week in April, but, um, I'm not a meteorologist. So, um, you know, John and Ace, maybe Ace, maybe you can shed some light.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I wouldn't hazard a guess. I tell you, like, as soon as we can, we're gonna get the tent out there and we're gonna get the, the folks out there. I was out there today though. And there's a nice little stream running through the field. The kindergarteners were loving it. And, you know, it's hard to say. I mean, I'm here in snow beginning of next week too, so. Yeah, I, I couldn't hazard a guess, but as soon as we can, we will.
Yeah, tada. It's, uh, it's New England. It's gonna do what it's gonna do and it'll be muddy till it's dry.
I mean, you can see kinda where my questions are leading, right? I'm just trying to, you know, I wanna make sure we, informationally, we talked about the logistics side of, timing pieces of this, right? Karen or Carol, you know, the other piece of the logistics and timing aspect, and Jeff talked a little bit of it is we, and some of our school committee members ask questions in, um, in, um, opposite of it, right, uh, is, you know, um, from an educational perspective, you guys are more, uh, you know, from that perspective, I'd like to hear from you guys on impact, non-impact from a timing perspective. April fifth versus, you know, April fifth versus March fifteenth in a, in a, you know, you know, you know, you really could look at it, you know, what is, what does two weeks mean, right? What does two weeks mean, right? Cause you could talk about March fifteenth versus April fifth for elementary or April fifth versus April twenty-sixth for middle school, right? So, you know, you're really talking about a two to three week timeframe gap in terms of moving or, or keeping those dates that Jeff recommended. You know, from an educational perspective, what are your thoughts as it relates to pros, cons, uh, benefits to student, students? Um, in first, versus the, the logistics and requirements of the moving buildings back?
Yeah, I, I would say that I, 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 I really support the idea of having the students come back on an elementary level, April fifth. I think that that's a good call on the commissioner's part. I do think that we, we can spare the time in the middle, high school to get these pieces in place that Diane spoke about without compromising, um, the, the quality of education or the, uh, loss and educational time for those students. We have, we have systems in place already. We obviously have, the, the students coming in a hybrid model. Many of them are already doing live streaming, similar to what they'll be doing. If they come, if, if, if and when we are offering the, um, the, the full in model, there will be students doing the remote learning as well. So we do have those pieces in place. I, I just see with all of this, it's, it's a process. Um, there were some questions around the timeline for this. The, the questionnaire, we have the questionnaire is actually all ready to go. I know the teachers, uh, the principals were sending that out on Friday. The plan is going out tomorrow so that parents can get refreshed on what, what the models are again. Um, they're gonna get more information next week. We can rush this through, but, but we want to give, the flip side of that is, are we giving families enough time to make an informed decision on what they want to do with their children for the remainder of the year? And to do this return in a, in a manageable, kind of insensible timeframe. I suppose you can do anything quickly, but we want to do it well. We want to do it as, as, um, with minimal impact on the students. But as far as the educational piece, I, we're, we're, we're continuing to teach. It's not going to stop in the next couple of weeks. So, um, I, I, I like the idea of the elementary going back the way it is. And I can see us giving a couple more weeks to the high school, middle high school to get those, to get them back in. If we, if we can get them back in sooner, the one thing I, I wanted to also mention, the plan does say no later than April twenty-sixth. If there's a way that we can get the middle, high school back in sooner, then, then by all means, we will do that. Diane is sending out her questionnaire the same time, um, as the, as the elementary principals. We just need to kinda have a little buffer if we need to have it. You know, it's, if we said we're one, we're coming back April fifth and they're not ready to go, then what happens? Because all the families are preparing for April fifth and we just can't logistically do it. So we don't want to put anyone in that position. So that's my thoughts.
Karen, did you wanna add anything? I just wanna make sure other stakeholders were able to share.
But I, I think Carol said it beautifully and I think, you know, everybody wants the students back in as soon as possible. Certainly from the mental health standpoint, I know that everyone is concerned that they, they want them back in. But the absolute worst thing we can do is rush this and not do it thoroughly. And then have communities spread and end up going back out again. So I think we're being very careful to make sure that we have the equipment we need. We have the spaces we need, that things are planned. We won't have students wandering around and interacting. And we have to have those pieces in place so that we can do it safely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Carol. Thank you both. Uh, that was all the questions, um, that I had. Uh, does any other school committee members have any other follow-up questions? Now would be the time.
Follow-up questions, of course.
Okay, go right ahead, Mike.
And so the tables that you're gonna buy, Diane, are these in addition to tables you had last year or are they completely new tables? Do you need more tables? What's, what's the reason for that? I know you said they're currently eating at desks, but.
Yeah, so, um, because of the guidelines, um, students have to be, be faced six feet apart and they cannot be, they all have to be facing in the same direction. Um, so it, it just space-wise, um, using our previous cafeteria tables, you know, a typical cafeteria table, um, does not work. So we utilize the, um, student desk and chairs that weren't be util, weren't being utilized because of, um, us having cohorts. We then had to, um, we did pricing and, um, we found that it was cheaper to purchase, um, you know, the eight-foot plastic tables. Um, our facilities director did, you know, use some CAD software, um, to take dimensions. And so that we're able to figure out exactly how many students we could fit in. So it would be two per eight-foot table, but they still all have to be set up facing the exact, you know, facing the same direction. So we have purchased, um, those tables already. We'll use our existing, uh, we'll use existing, chairs, loose chairs that we would have in the multipurpose room, the band room. I think we may have to borrow some from our friends at the elementary school as well. But it really is just those, um, those tables that we had to purchase.
So the single-sided tables, the, the old tables, they're too big, they won't fit in the spaces?
Yeah, they're too big and they, and they're like the little round seats and literally someone is, is like, I don't know, like two feet next to you.
All right, so that they, they're the ones with the seats attached and they fold up.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
The logistics being so important to get the number of kids that you have coming back and how you're gonna configure that and everything. Did you give any thought since you just mentioned, I don't know if it was Carol or Karen, just mentioned those questionnaires are ready to go now. Is there any thought to sending them out with the report tomorrow and telling parents, here's the report? We need to know what you want to do. I, my guess is ninety five percent of parents, probably more, know what they're gonna do right now. Cause we've been talking about this for a couple of months, so. Why not just give them the questionnaire now and ask for it to come back with their kids on Monday? That will help, that will, that will get your numbers. And, you know, you don't want to rush through it and do it wrong, but I, I also don't think we need two and a half weeks to get that. So that might go a long way in helping you, even if we stick with the twenty sixth date. That will give you a lot more time to plan. With your numbers. I, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of parents on this committee right now. I mean, you know what you're going to do, I would imagine. I'm speaking with you, you know, the plan. Lori's saying, yes, I know what we're gonna do. We know, we've known what we're gonna do since we started talking about this in January, so. It seems a little bit wasteful to wait two and a half weeks for the questionnaire when everybody probably knows what they want to do right now. So that was just a follow up question, if you could maybe think about that. And by the time we get through our deliberations, maybe we can discuss that. And then as far as the hiring, are you looking at, are these completely new people that you're looking at to hire? Or are these people who have worked in the building before, like last year that maybe you didn't need with the cohort system that we have going on right now? You didn't need, but you'll need more people for the full return. Uh, so are these completely new people or are they people that you've got experience with in the past? This, I don't know if this is for Jeff or for the principals, I'm not sure.
There, um. Well, they're not all new positions, but there'll be new people. So we've had retirees and so those positions are existing positions. But there'll be new people. Again, we didn't hire them because we didn't, you know, we didn't need them and we didn't wanna. Then be spending money for positions we didn't need. There's some additional positions. Diane's asked for one. Just to, just because, again, because of the logistics of, especially of like releasing that, you know. Students entering the building and leaving the building and lunch duty, hall duty. So she's asked for another position. That's a, that's a new position just for the spring. So it's a combination of them.
So that, for the most part, they're, they're positions that you would normally have in a normal year. That you didn't need this year because of the.
That we wouldn't have, Mike, I, I didn't hear you.
So as far as the positions that you're hiring for, they're positions that you would have in a normal year, like you would have had them last year. You didn't need them this year because of the cohort, there's some of them, yeah.
Some of them, so it's about.
The people that you're looking at to fill them, are they the people that would have had them last year or are they completely new people that you have to completely vet?
Completely new people. So like the, the positions we had, we have that, like, we're familiar with. Those are gonna have to be new people, because those are all things like retirements. And then we're gonna have new positions where we just gotta grab people from outside the building. We're gonna hire new people. So, it'll be all new people, some familiar positions.
Alright, thanks. I did have one other question for you, Jeff. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in front of someone there. I think it was Paula who spoke at the beginning. If we're going to wait another four weeks for the elementary and eight weeks for the, the Tohato group. Is it possible we could improve the remote zooms? Cause I, I have to agree with her, they're terrible, at least at the elementary level. I mean. And it's not because of the teachers, I just want to make sure I say that right now. It's not because of the teachers, it's just the situation. It's. It is not any single teacher that makes it horrible, it's just the situation. But they are, they are bad, they're rough. And I mean, the best choice might even be to cancel some of them, I don't know, but it's, it's, could you give some consideration to? If we're gonna be waiting another eight weeks to do this, to get back, could we do something about those, please? Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members?
Mike, I, I don't want you to use that word terrible, please. That's very disrespectful of the teachers.
No, it's not. The teachers are not terrible. The situation is terrible. I, I believe the word used from the parent who spoke was failure. So whichever word it's gonna be, it's, they're, they're not, they're not good. And it's not because of the teachers, Keith. The teachers are doing the absolute best they can. We know that. It's just the entire situation, I mean. Recess on Zoom or, or would you rather, or, you know, show and tell for an hour straight. You know, my kid's going crazy here and I think a lot of the parents' kids are too, so.
Yeah, I'm, same here. You got a third grader, I understand.
Yeah, I, I mean, I heard. I heard something different from that particular parent. I'm not, I'm not sure that I heard the zooms were. I heard more of a focused conversation around. One, there was a mention around the, the remote learning plans that were chosen at the beginning of the year, and I think I talked with that, but secondly, I think more for. At least what I heard, more of the direction of that. Comment wasn't necessarily around the process or the Zoom, but it was more around the, the. On time learning and the way that was being organized, right? So I honestly think, I think you're both sort of hitting two points, I think. And, and, but I, but I agree. Mike, that. We do owe it to parents and students, if there is a concern around that stuff, to try to make that better. Over the next four weeks for the K through five and eight weeks for. So I agree with you, I, I. I hope that the others heard that.
Throw you on the bus on that. I agree with what you guys are both saying.
Okay, any, do we have any, any other questions for? For Jeff or anyone else before we will move into our deliberation phase? Okay. So what we need is a, I need a, again, we're making a motion in a second to move us into our deliberatory phase. We are not gonna move. Lori, we're not moving to a vote, we're not moving to any of that stuff. We'll talk about those things and, you know, more topics. Around timing, that type of stuff that we, we'd like to talk about, so.
Jim, is it possible to move for a three minute pause before we get to that?
Sure, let's take it, we'll take, we'll take a timeout.
Stretch your legs.
Wow, I didn't know that was, uh, that could be a motion. Can we do that every week?
I think that. I will, yeah, you know, I want to make sure everybody, I don't want to hold anybody. In front that they don't have to, and it's an important conversation, so I want to give everyone an opportunity if they need to stress the legs or take a bio break too, so. You know, we have a long meeting ahead of us tonight, so I think it's probably a little appropriate that we allow for. See how many people disappeared? See, it was required.
I've been in six districts. I've never had a seventh inning stretch down a school committee meeting, but I gotta tell you, it wasn't bad. Old Mr. Topman might have hit a home run with this one.
I'm not great ideas, Jeff, you should listen to me sometime.
Don't anybody get any funny ideas. This will not be a. This will not be a consistent theme on school committee meetings moving forward.
I don't know, Jim, they're allowed to make a motion like that when, when they want.
Well, that's true, that's supposed.
We're only on the first real item.
I'm also, I'm also allowed to not take the motion either, Jim. Nah, I would never do that. Alright, we almost had every.
Dinner that I haven't finished, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Alright.
I'm here for you guys.
Like, okay, alright, uh, let's move us back into session here. Alright, so what we, we require now. I'd like to have, if I could, I'd like to have a motion to approve Jeff's return to school plan as presented this evening.
Motion to approve the plan or to deliberate the plan?
If the motion is to approve his, the motion is to approve his plan as presented. It does not mean that will be the eventual plan that we vote on, but the emotion to get into deliberation. Is to move the, is, is to approve the plan that Jeff has presented this evening.
Okay, I'll move that.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. Okay. Alright, I'm sure we do have some deliberations, so actually what I'll do is. Or you brought up an excellent topic, so why don't we, why don't we start with that topic and then we can cover any other, any other topics?
So I was just looking at the calendar and. I think my concern about going back to twenty sixth is, you know, one of the reasons we want the kids back in school. Before the beginning of next year is we don't want them to get. You know what, they would spend the whole summer worrying about getting, going back to school, what it's gonna be like. And I think a lot of parents are gonna have a rough April vacation. I'm wondering if it's possible to consider having the, the high school go back the week prior. Which I believe it's still give, I think, six weeks if I counted correctly. So it would, it would be a bump up. It would save a lot of nerves. Just a suggestion. I understand there's a lot to be done. I also understand there's a lot of time in March. So I'm just hopeful that we could consider that because. These kids have anxiety. I've talked to several parents who have noted that their children used to love school and, and now they don't want to go. We've received letters on that. I have one child who's like that. I just think it might be more helpful if we just consider, not asking about a big bump up. I'm just asking that we consider the students' feelings so that when they go on vacation, they feel comfortable with what's going on. And when they come back, it's not a huge change.
So Lori, are you, are you suggesting the date of the twelfth versus?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at March, you're right. Yes, I'm suggesting the date of the twelfth.
March of the twenty sixth. Any other? Any other question, any other conversation around that piece?
So, yeah, so exactly what we're voting on and Jeff, if you want to chime in. So, hold on, I'm just looking at my calendar tip. So the twenty sixth is when. Are we all pretty much in favor that the fifth is what K through five is gonna do, correct?
No.
Okay, but if we do say that, then I'm just, just saying it. Then the plan would be the twenty sixth, but as Jeff said, if we can get it. Ready to go prior to that for the middle school and high school. Then we will, right? Is, is that what you're saying, Jeff?
That's correct. You know, and part of the issue here, especially with the high school is. Especially now that the fifth is a date that's been set by the commissioner. Things like bus routes, there's gonna be a lot of, of school districts who are gonna. Now request their bus routes to be redesigned for the fifth, because they have elementary schools. And we don't get first crack at that because we're, we're a small district, so all of the big districts around. They'll get their elementary routes run first and these bus companies have to, they have, they schedule a hybrid route. They'll schedule a full in route. So that stuff we just don't know about and, and so. There's a lot of, again, it's not that we disagree with this going back early, it's just that. The reason why we, we say no later than is because. There, we're a small district, so we don't always get first crack at these things, so. If you say the twelfth and the buses aren't running by the twelfth, because they haven't scheduled us. Then the buses aren't running by the twelfth. I mean, there's really not a lot we can do, so I mean, if they are in the, and, and it gets done. Well, then that's one thing out of the way.
So we not have any bus information from the summer preparation that we can use? I mean, is that not count?
Not for full in, no, not for full in, because nobody did it. I mean, you know, the few schools that did go full in. I mean, none of them are around here and none of them use a bus service, so.
So we tell the bus company, we're going back on this date, they might not do it, is there not a contract for that or anything?
Might not do it, is that we don't, is that they schedule them, you know, they have, they have. They have school districts that have forty, fifty routes and those take priority, so. They, they might not get to us by then and normally. You see, normally we wouldn't be saying that, but now the commissioner comes out today and says, well, April fifth, you have to go back. All of those big districts that, that may not have been thinking April fifth, thinking, are calling those bus companies saying, we need it by April fifth. And again, those big, those big districts, they get done first. I know they're working on them because, you know, I've talked, Bob and I have talked about this. They are working on the routes. And I'm not saying they won't get done. I'm just saying these are the things that. We don't know, and that's why we have a no later than the twenty sixth. I mean, obviously, we, we have that vacation weekend there to reset the buildings, put everything in place while nobody's there. You know.
Jeff, I think that just reiterates, you need to get these questionnaires out yesterday and you need to get them back.
We're gonna look at.
Two weeks, you know, because they, the bus company, I'm assuming they can't do anything until they know who's gonna be in, right? So let's get them up, let's get them. I like Lori's, I like Lori's idea because what happens if you return the Tohato kids before vacation? You get them in there that week, it's probably a lost week, right? Everybody's trying to figure out what to do. No matter when they go back, you're gonna have this problem of, you know, a little bit of anxiety coming back, first day of school, jitters. All that stuff, figuring out how it's gonna work. Get that out of the way that week, go on vacation, get refreshed. And come back for the rest of the school year, ready to go. I like Lori's idea.
Not arguing that, Mike. We just want to do it as safely as possible and.
Oh, to be safe.
I don't, you know what, I, I don't know if you do, because these are things that are out of our control. And even scheduling, you know, scheduling just a high school takes a good part of a summer. They have to essentially go back and reschedule both of those buildings. Those things take a lot of time. Because they still have to run the school district. I mean, they still gotta run their buildings. Those are the things people, you, they, that don't get considered. And so I, I completely agree, we could look at that schedule and maybe push the, the, the questionnaire up. I think that's a good suggestion. We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that. But there's a lot of things that are, that, you know. You will, you know, if you want us to commit to a date, we will, but if there's no buses running, there's no buses running. There's, there's some things that, that are out of our control and that you're trying to control. And what, and we keep telling you that and you, you keep saying, well, why don't you just do this? There's a lot on, on our control.
I have faith that the adult running the bus companies and, and the people that want to get these kids back and help them. I have faith they'll, they'll, they'll get it done. I think that'll work.
Yeah, I have faith in it too, but you know, my faith in your faith doesn't get the buses running. I mean, it might not happen. And so that's why these dates of no later than. I mean, you, you, you keep saying you have faith, we believe in the teachers, yet when it comes to setting a date, you, you wanna. I mean, you, you keep saying you have faith, we believe in the teachers, yet when it comes to setting a date, you, you want a different date. Like you don't trust that that's what we'll do. Do you trust that if we say before the 26th, we mean that if we can get there before the 26th, we will. And if we can get there before the fifth, we will.
I, I believe that whatever date we vote on, you'll get it done. That's what I believe.
Okay.
I have faith, I have faith in you that you'll get done, whatever the committee asks you to get done. I, then I don't know what, what you're, you're going, like, if we say the 26th is okay and you're gonna try to work for the 12th, no, I don't, I think you'll probably work for the 26th.
Well, then you don't trust me to do what I'm saying, that, what, what I'm saying will do then.
I trust you to do that because that's what the committee will vote to have you do. I see you, Angela. Don't worry.
Jeff, could I ask you a question about the dates? If, if you say the 26th and, and you tell the parents what you're saying tonight, 26th, if we can get it done earlier, then we'll do it earlier. And then it ends up that you can do it early. Do you think that will be difficult for parents to adjust their family schedules and so on to make an earlier date happen?
I agree with Lori. I think parents want to come back. I don't think there's any question about that. I think the majority of the parents, if you said, we're coming back tomorrow, would be, would come back. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have any question about that.
I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear. Let me try again. If you're, if you're, if you tell them it's a 26th, every, that you're, this is one where this is our target date, but if we can do it earlier, we will. So they make their plans, their family plans accordingly. So they're already with their family schedules to send their kids back and have their childcare arrangements or whatever. It's, you know, whatever after school things, the schedule's all set up, but then it turns out you can do it earlier. Do you think parents will be able to pivot like that?
I think, I think they will, given, and, and you know what, I don't, I don't know for sure, but given the results of the survey, I, I would say that they, they would. I mean, I, I think that they would actually look forward to a date that's before the dates we set. That's just my, that's my feeling. I mean, probably the parents committee would have a better sense than that, but I would, gave them a tw- date of the 26th and then we said, you know, we, we were able to get this done by the 12th, then I, I think they would, I think they would. Yeah, I don't think they'd have a problem with it, but I, I don't, I don't know that for certain. That's just my feel. I mean, I don't have any evidence of that, but except the, except the survey results. So.
So, yeah, I'm wondering if there, maybe there's a question you could add into the survey to ask people, you know, if we were able to, to be ready a week earlier, could you also? Just to get a read on that. But um, my, my own feeling is that I'm listening very carefully to what you're saying and what every other leader in the room is saying here. And I hear a lot of consistency across the administrative team. And I believe that they have put a lot of thought into this and they've considered a lot of factors, they, a lot of information that we don't even have access to. And I, I, I trust the administration to make the best decision and the best effort to get kids back into school. That's where I'm sitting at this point.
I guess I have some concerns about an earlier date for the middle school, high school. I do want to remind everyone that we do have variants out there. Um, and I, I have some concerns about rushing in before some of that plays out. And I'm not entirely unopposed to having middle school, high school start the 12th of April rather than the week after. But I'm going to read a, a paragraph from Commissioner Riley's guidance on page five that, and but before I do that, it kind of reminds me, this whole thing about sending kids back to school reminds me about when you get a prescription from the doctor and you read that information on it and all the side effects, even death. And, but it says, your doctor has determined that the benefits outweigh the risks. And so that's what I think about when we, the commissioners asked for a phased in approach to return to school. He has deemed that the elementary kids, the benefit outweighs the risk for getting them back as soon as possible. So here's his, here's his paragraph that I just kind of want us to bear in mind. This is verbatim. With this timeline, Desi aims to steadily increase the number of students learning in person for the remainder of the school year. The plan unfolds in phases, allowing us to assess implementation and health indicators before moving to the next phase. During these phases, we will work in close collaboration with state health officials and medical experts to monitor case counts in schools, assess public health metrics and monitor for potential impacts of the COVID-19 variants. In addition, we will seek feedback from district and school leaders on implementation. Ultimately, the commissioner will confirm the timeline for proceeding to subsequent phases before, based on review of these data points and other relevant findings for implementation and following written notes to the board. So I want to remind the committee members that the commissioner said for middle school, April 28th. We're saying middle school, April 26th and high school. He hasn't even given a date for high school yet, but he promises that it will be two weeks before. So I just want to throw that out there on my feelings on this. That's it. Thanks.
You know, one thing that I think about regardless of the date going back, a lot of, a lot of schools in the state are not even open at all. They're not even in hybrid, right? So they need all this time just to, to start to even get to a, a spot. But we're in school five days a week right now. I mean, the adults are in the building five days a week right now. You got a cohort Monday, Tuesday, a cohort Thursday, Friday. As far as doing phased reopenings, like you said there, Angela, I mean, I, I don't know what the man is thinking. I don't pretend to, but we're already, we've already got kids in school. The risk, whatever risk there is, exists now. You're combining the classes. So I guess the, the concern is a more densely packed room. But if any of those kids are coming in with it, whether they're in a cohort room or a full in room, they're coming in with something. It's gonna get passed around. I think, I, I don't know what our case count in our schools are right now, but I assume it's pretty low. I don't know if it's zero or not, but I assume it's pretty low. Our, our towns are pretty low. Where Berlin is green, I think Boylston or gray, Boylston was green. They've been trending down for months. I mean, we're, we're pretty low risk. We've got over half the teachers are vaccinated already or have appointments to get vaccinated. I think one of the buildings, I think it was almost 60%, maybe 53% and 50%, I think is what I saw. So, I mean, the risk that we're talking about here is so small that I think the benefit of having everybody back, back as soon as possible does far outweigh whatever the risk might be. The logistical concerns, I can understand that. I mean, if, if it takes three weeks to move the desks back, then it takes three weeks. But as far as making a decision on, on that, I mean, the risk, we're already in the schools right now. So that risk is there. We're just trying to get a better academic experience for the kids.
I don't, I don't think we know the risk of the variants that are rolling in, especially with the CDC saying that they anticipate a spike in March and April.
Yes, but the risk I'm talking about is, we're not talking about not doing hybrid or going full remote. We're, we're simply hybrid to full in. So if that variant is there in hybrid, it's going to be there in full in, but it's also going to be there in hybrid if we stay in hybrid. So that, that's the point I'm trying to make. That's when I think about it. That's how I put it in terms of risk in my head.
But the proximity between students is, is closer when you're full in.
Sure.
So it's a different risk.
Which, as Angela said, the benefit of having them there far outweighs whatever that risk might, in, in my personal opinion.
I just wonder too, with, with the variants out there, like pushing parents to make a decision before March 22nd. Maybe some parents want a little time to see what's happening in these next week, week and a half. And, you know, unless we as a school district are gonna let parents opt back in at a later date, I, I, I don't know.
A lot of talk about variants. Do we know what it means to be a variant?
We know that it's more easily transmissible, whether it's more, there's just too many unknowns.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess I wouldn't feel more comfortable other than bumping up the middle, high school one week and then I'm kind, you know, with vacation, I'm like, is, is that really necessary?
I'm wondering too, if we, you know, when, when you're ready, I guess, Keith, I'd be interested to know how you're thinking at this point. I think we've heard a little bit from everybody else on the committee and Jim, yes.
I, I'll share. I was just kind of letting everybody else have their conversation and I'll share some of my, my thoughts and how I would like to manage this discussion as we move forward. Cause I do want to, in, in an effort of time, and, and again, I'm not trying to minimize the importance of this discussion, but I want to move us through a process to get to a point. I'm not a fan of the, I think we need to pick two dates. It's just my personal opinion. I, I think that there's too many variables, too many complications, too many discussions around not having two dates. I'm not saying what those dates should be. I'm just saying even, even the wording at, at latest, at this, at that, I'm just, you know, I'm not comfortable with that. I think to, you know, because I agree with everybody. I think to Mike's point, I, I don't think we'll get in earlier if we choose dates, if we specifically say dates. I, I don't think we will. But I also do think maybe we can get in earlier in some, in some places. So I would like to see us pick two dates and stick with those day, and, and stick with those dates and allow teachers to plan, allow everybody to plan appropriately from a school perspective, from a parent perspective, from a getting the kids ready, put, you know, that the kids want a date in their mind too. At least I know mine do. They, they, they want a date and that date differs between whichever kid you ask, but they want a date. So, you know, I, I would prefer to see us get to that, get to that perspective. I do, I, I'm really struggling with, you know, and there's a lot of back and forth on the, what outweighs what, pros, cons, benefits, non-benefits. And, and you know, and, and I don't really want to get too crazy, but I, one week, two weeks, three weeks and outweighs this and that. And I, I'm really struggling with that aspect of it. I, I do think from a conversation perspective, you know, I do want to take, and I don't, Mike, I know that you disagree with the April 5th date as a start date. And I believe, and that's consistent with, you know, your beliefs on this, you, you know, I think you believe that we could go back sooner in all the, all the different categories, right? So I, I believe that that's what, at least I think that's what you believe. I don't want to put words in your mouth. So I think, I think you would be, I think you would look at the, even the April 5th date. It's too late and you, you, you've been very consistent on that, on that message. What I'd like to do, if I can, and if this is, everybody finds appropriate, I really just like to get a feeling from the rest of the committee, if there's any interest in the discussion other than April 5th for the start of elementary. Because what I'd like to do is if there's not a consensus idea from that perspective, I'd like to get us to move on past that April 5th date and, and narrow in on the discussion around middle school, high schools. Just, that's just in an effort to kind of get us towards potentially any motions or votes that we're gonna, or the vote that we need to take. So I'd like to, you know, is there anybody else? And Mike, I don't want to, I don't want to silence you either. So I want to give you, maybe why don't you take a minute or two, you know, I don't want to even limit you on my time and kind of share your thoughts around the April 5th date for elementary. And then I just want to see if there's any other temperance for, for that, for, for, yeah, even a discussion around moving that date.
Yeah, sure. Coming into tonight before hearing Jeff and Diane and John and Ace speak and Carol and Karen. Yeah, I wanted to suggest that we go back with elementary school tomorrow, right? Of course. And then I realized, oh yeah, that's a little aggressive. So Monday would be a fair start. After hearing the talks about the logistics, all right, nobody's really hung up on the science of it, which was my concern. So I think everybody's agreeing on that safety side of it. I mean, you want to put this questionnaire out to get the bus companies going and get your classes sorted out. Why can't we aim for like the 22nd of March? I mean, the, these kids, these are the ones, the younger kids who, you know, you can't send them to their room to do remote learning. They can't go read chapter six and come back and do the test, right? They need to be handheld at home, the younger ones. And maybe the fourth graders and fifth graders are a little better, but you know, the, the earlier we can get them back, the better. To me, that's this coming Monday, but I understand the logistical issues with that. So, you know, can we not do it by the 22nd? So you wanted a date for me? So that, that's my.
Oh, no, that's exactly what I was hoping you would. Is there any other, I, I, at this point, I'd like to hear from the other school committee members if there's any, anyone who wants to either support that, oppose it. So any, any other comments from the school committees as released to that?
I guess my question would be, if we have enough time to send the survey out, get the answers back and then get the buses all set up. I don't, I feel like I'm looking at my calendar and that gives about a week and a half. I wouldn't be adverse to considering the week after or the fifth. I understand like it, you know, in a month, you can increase a child's reading, grade level reading, a whole grade. You know, these are, these are really important times. So I see, Mike, why you, why you want them back earlier. And I also understand the logistics. It's a really, it's a tough place to be. I feel like the 22nd might be a little too early just because there wouldn't be enough time to figure things out.
Um, when is that town hall for the principals?
Tuesday. The 16th.
The 16th. And then the survey is going out the 12th. Is that right, Jeff? Jeff, yes, I, I don't see Jeff, but.
That's what he said, yeah.
So even the ser- I mean, the, the questions from the principals, I mean.
Well, he mentioned he'd be open to getting that out early.
Yeah.
And that's, listen, that, that's, that's what the parents are saying. That's what you were hearing from the younger parents. You're right, though, it's a logistic issue. But the logistics at the elementary school, obviously with the one classroom are, are different than the high school, I guess, right? I've, I've learned that tonight at least. So if you got the survey out this week, give the parents the weekend to discuss it and consider it. I mean, yeah, maybe that messes with your town hall. We didn't do the town hall earlier. I don't know. It's already been kind of thrown out, but I don't know. But I do know that every hour we can get them back earlier is better. So.
Any other feedback opinion as it relates to the April 5th date in the elementary side of things?
I mean, based on what the administration tells me, that it, it just seems like they picked that date for, for the reason, I mean.
Well, the administration didn't pick that date. The state picked that date.
No, but they agreed to that date. They could have done it further out or, or sooner. But yes.
I know that, I think the fifth is the drop dead date, right?
I know what you're saying, Mike. Yes, they have to do it now. Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I know exactly what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with you at all. But I, I like to hear from Jeff. I mean, what if it was the 29th? Would that be crazy?
You know, you, you asked us to present a plan. The dates on there reflect what we think we can reasonably do. If you want to reset the entire thing, then do it. But, and we'll, you know, Mike is right. We'll, we'll try. try to go with any date you suggest. But for you to ask me, well, can we do this data that date? We can do the dates we set in the plan. We set them there for a reason to give the parents a reasonable amount of time to respond. Any other date you choose means that that gives them less time. We can do it. Given the logistical stuff, some of the things we can control, some of the things we can't control. If you set these dates, then we'll try to meet them. But if we don't, who picks up the pieces here? Me, in the district. So before you set dates, you know, who's going to be responsible for this? You know, what, what, what evidence do you have of what you're saying? I'm not sure. Like we, you asked us to set a plan, we set the plan. We, I know, we'd like to go in tomorrow. I I understand that. We all understand that. And you know, Mike, to some degree, you're right. If you set a date, that's, you know, that's the date people aim for. I mean, I get that. That's, you know, I can't totally argue with that, but we set dates that we thought we could reasonably hit and that it would give people the most amount of time. I get hate mail too, but in the end of the day, I have to decide what's best for the district, what's best for the teachers, what's best for the students. Then we make a decision as a leadership team. And you know, this, this plan has has buy in. So you know, you, you know, you're going well, a day here, a day there and.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff, I'm putting you in a hard spot. I get it. You have to look out for the teachers and all that. I just want to read from the Berlin Boylston Regional School District Handbook, Norms and Standards for the Committee. Jeff, you have different obligations. The Committee, School Committee sets forth these standards and norms that we will all commit to abide by as individuals and as a committee. Number one says, the School Committee represents the needs and interests of all students in the districts and place their interests above all others in the decisions we make. Not a single spot in this norms and standards and document says that we set decisions in the interest of anyone other than students. So I don't want to be a complete asshole and say that I'm against teachers because I'm not. But as a committee, we're obligated to make a decision in the interest of students. And the interest of students is to not be in remote school. It's to be in classrooms.
Hold on, Jeff, Jeff, but Mike, you're making that statement is if you're making that statement, you're getting up here and making a statement that you're determining that's the best interest of all students. That's what you're saying. You're forgetting the word all. And I absolutely one hundred percent agree with you. But when I joined the School Committee and I hear the word all, that means if this affects one student differently than another, I'm going to listen to it. I'm going to listen to the reasons why we're going to make a decision in that way. You have a way of using words at times that aren't necessarily what they mean, right? So if you're going to make that statement, stand by it, represent all of the students. What you're saying is you're representing a portion of the students, a certain population, maybe that percentage is a little bit higher, but you're not speaking for all the students when you make a statement like that. So I would just.
I haven't heard from any student who benefits from remotely.
Well, Mike, I can make an argument and a good one. And any, any teacher here or any former teacher will tell you that what's best for those teachers is best for those students.
I mean. Jim, Jim, I'd like to move the question. You had a question about where we, where we're sitting on the eight, on the April fifteenth date. April fifth, what was it? Whatever, the elementary date, fifth. I'd like, I'd like to let move that question.
Is there, okay, move, what your, your move is you would like to move it?
Well, I would just like you started out by saying you'd like to know if the, if the committee is in support of the initial elementary return date that Jeff was proposing. So you can determine whether we can move on to the middle and high school date.
Okay, so, all right, so just looking at the committee now, do we feel there's enough? Do we feel there's enough support behind moving the April fifth date to entertain any type of motion on that date at this point in time?
It sounds to me like Susan just made a motion to approve the April fifth date for the elementary. Is that correct, Susan? And if so, she needs a second.
Okay, I will move to accept the April fifth return date for the elementary grades as proposed in superintendent's plan for.
No more discussion about an earlier date.
And I'll second that. And then we can discuss it and then you can make an amendment to change the date.
Sure, I moved to amend it.
To what date, Mike?
The twenty second. March twenty second.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, hearing none. We're moving on. Do we have any other motions as it relates to the date of April fifth? Okay, hearing none. So we will recognize the motion to approve the April fifth date for the start of the elementary school. Angela had a second, so I'll do a roll call vote on that to move us on to the next section. Angela?
I.
Susan?
I.
Mike?
I.
Lori?
Hi.
I'm an I as well.
Jim, just as a matter of procedure, if I could, wasn't there a motion on the table to accept the plan as as presented by the superintendent?
Yeah. So again, I'm sure there's somebody, listen, again, I'm sure there's somebody watching this who's going to find procedural error in this and I will fall on the sword when that, when that happens. I have talked with, I have reread Robert's Rules of Order and I've conferred with with legal. Our main motion to accept the plan happens. Any amendment motions made within that motion need to be moved second and voted and moved on before you can get to the final vote on that. So all amendment motions happen within the deliberation of the main motion, according to what I'm, I was told. If that works out that it's incorrect, I apologize in in forefront, but that's my understanding procedurally right now.
I think the, I think the place where we maybe just messed up there is that I didn't actually propose an amendment.
Mike did.
Right, but to what I proposed, so.
Right, so. And what would have happened there is we would have gotten to where we happened with Mike, Mike proposing an amendment to that. To that point, you you move the conversation to get the deliberation going through. And and we would have got to Mike's motion eventually, so.
So to Jeff's point, though, that the motion to accept the plan is still on the table.
Correct, because if we do approve an amendment to it, that motion will then get moved with the approved amendment of any, any changes before we vote.
So there's, okay, so we're back to discussion about the original plan. And then.
We're talking about now, unless there's other topics that come up after this, but discussion hours back to the date of the twenty six for middle school and high school.
Second part of the plan. Okay, thank you.
Is there any, any further discussion as it relates to this one tended, this one felt like it had some more support for moving up the date? Does anyone else have any other comments or there, you know, questions, concerns, comments as relates to moving up that date of the twenty six? Processes would process processes, process would go the same way if someone want, if there was a motion made to amend the start date of the twenty six, that motion would be made, it would require a second and then a vote anymore. Discussion could happen, but then a vote would happen on that requested amendment before we move to vote on the final final plan.
So what we have right now is is Lori's suggestion about the twelfth. And anyone else?
Make a motion.
Yeah, I was just wondering that.
Yeah, yeah, you would have to do that. But if anybody else has anything for or support or against that or another date, that now would be the time to discuss that.
No, we wouldn't discuss it until a motion is made.
Correct. The motion needs to get made first and then we can discuss pro con if someone's going to make a motion. Otherwise, right now, if we move to a vote, it's the twenty six.
Okay, I would make an emotion to consider April twelfth for the return of the middle school, high school.
Not, not to consider, Lori, but to start.
The motion will be.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll second Lori's motion.
All right. Thank you both. All right. So any discussion questions? Further deliberation around the date of April twelfth?
I guess since everyone's sharing all these personal anecdotes, I'll just share that there are upper upperclassmen at the high school level that actually themselves have their own anxiety or concern about going back to school. So I guess I am inclined to give them a couple extra weeks. And I'm also concerned about people coming back from vacations. So but I know there's nothing we can do about that. So.
So Angela, that's actually, you just reminded me of my other point. So if we were to open the week prior to April vacation, the kids would go into school and they would know what system they're going into. I have a feeling that parents that are going away April vacation, even though, you know, the all you need is a COVID test and and all this to come back, might be more inclined to quarantine versus having their child miss the full return to school. That was actually one of the things I had written down because if you consider the April vacation and then all of a sudden they're starting school on Monday and now the parent's torn between, oh, my God, it's this brand new thing.
I think it's an excellent point, Lori, actually.
So that was my thought about it, just because I feel like now you're torn between two really hard places. You're torn between, I should probably quarantine if I can and I don't want my kid not to be there on the first day and now be nervous when they go back or not know what the system is.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. I think I would probably, you know, support the twelfth based on that comment, actually.
Anyone else? Okay, all right, we're going to move that. We've had a, we've had our motion on the amendment in the second, so we're going to move that to a vote. I'm going to continue to go in the same order. So on the motion to amend the motion to approve Jess's plan, we, the amendment will be moving the date of the twenty six to the twelfth of April for middle school and high school. Angela?
I.
Susan?
No.
Mike?
I.
Lori?
Hi.
Keith? And the chair would be an I as well. So we're past this five to one.
What did we vote on just now?
Jeff will be, will be amending your, your return to school plan for middle school, high school from the twenty six to the twelfth. Okay, now that we've covered date perspective, is there any other topics as it relates to Jeff's reentry plan that need deliberation prior to our vote? I am hearing none. So I'm going to think, do what I think is the correct thing to do. And I am going to ask for a mo. Sorry, we will be.
Motion on the table, right?
We have the motion on the table. There's been an amendment. Again, the wording is, it's so very tricky.
Motion is now, I guess, to accept.
The motion now is to accept Jeff's reentry plan with the amended date of April twelfth versus the twenty six for the middle school and high school. Roll call vote. Angela?
I.
I.
Mike?
I.
Lori?
I.
Keith? Here's an I as well. Okay. It's, we might set a record for our school committee meetings, but important and understandable why we've spent so much time. So thank you all for, for the time that you're putting in tonight. So moving through our agenda, the next item on our agenda is election information. And we'll, I'll try to keep this, this is a very, another very important, sensitive topic. So I, I want to keep it brief, but as well we'll give it the time that it that it deserves. So I just want to provide some history background and where we are today and how we've gotten there. I have provided this in other school committee meetings. Anytime there was an update on this topic, it was provided in a school committee meeting. I just want to make sure that's clear for our folks at home that, you know, there's no behind the scenes waiting or talking or anything from this perspective. So just from a background perspective, when the two communities decided to regionalize, part of that regionalization agreement was moved, was to move to a biannual national election cycle. So what that would have put us into is a first election would have been this past November of two thousand and twenty. The requirement to file for that election was April fourteenth, April fifteenth, sorry, April fifteenth of the year. So how we got to this point where we are now is we that date was missed, okay? I, it, it really is a logistical mistake. Again, it was a mistake. Probably most, you know, it is the responsibility of the school committee when we chose to regionalize, we did separate ourselves legally from up some aspect from, from the towns and the communities. So it was the responsibility of the school committee at that time to be responsible for that. I think what, you know, there's really no explanation. It was missed. I don't think anybody knew who was responsible for doing that. The date was missed. And we recognized that as early as we could and began the process of trying to remediate that mistake that we made as a school committee. It was new to us. We had just regionalized. This was a totally new process that we were going to have to follow. Since that time, we worked with both communities, legal representation from both communities to determine what our best route would be. It was determined by the school district lawyer, the lawyers for the two communities that we would file legislation to make ourselves part of the May two thousand and twenty one town election cycle temporarily in an effort to get a school committee election in because we agree there had been some time since all the regulation and all that last election cycle. We filed that legislation either prior to or at the right at the beginning of COVID without, you know, the understanding of what the long term impact would be. As we are all aware, lead legislation basically shut down for a period of time. I don't know what the exact period of time was and obviously is bogged down and backed up due to everything that's going on, more importantly, through legislation. There's been, you know, I want to thank, there's been consistent help and effort from both communities, town administrators, the town managers, the select board, myself, members of this committee emailing our state legislators, our senators, all of those folks to help us push this through in an effort to get us into that May election cycle. It did not happen. It was out of our control. It did not get pushed through. So where that leaves us from a committee perspective is not a lot of great options, to be completely frank and transparent. And then I get it, there needs to be an election, there needs to be a fair and equitable democratic process in these communities. I will fight tooth and nail to say there is no any inclination of any other thing going on here to allow school community members to stay on or having an impact and how this all went down is absolutely I was, you know, I will take full effort to protect us as a group, not to protect us, but you know, we have done our best to make sure we we handle everything, you know, appropriately. That leaves us a couple of places, filing legislation again to put us in the next May community election cycle. We can file in April for the November twenty twenty two state election cycle. We can hold a special election. Or we can manage through this if we choose any of the other selections through a resignation and appointment. Or we can manage through this if we choose any of the other selections through a resignation and appointment process. Those are our options here today in terms of what's doing, doing the next, the right and more importantly, the legal responsibility that we have and the options that we have. I have cost to communication with our lawyer as it relates to this. You know, from a personal perspective, I one hundred percent, if I was a community member and I was interested in this, in volunteering, you know, I would, I would question this. Wha- what I would ask from the community is, and so just give some more information. I have reached out to both communities and asked for what cost would be to hold a special election, okay? That special election, if there's a cost associated with that, that would come out of school committee budget. So we would make, be making a decision to replace an educational piece of the budget or another piece of our existing budget with the costs associated with holding a special election, right? So that's some of the things that we need to think about, how that's going to impact the budget, what has to be removed, all of that impact. If that's what our, if there's enough outreach from, you know, parents, community members, and that's how they want to push that, we're gonna have to work with the towns regardless. Regardless if it, it's in our budget, our budget gets voted on by the town. It's part, part of the town budget. Town is paying for it, the taxpayers will be paying for it. You know, a- at some point, we, we'll, we'll have to determine that. So I'm gonna try to, I'm waiting for the analysis from the towns and what the class would be to hold a special election. And there's so many other discussions, that's a whole other topic, and we're not gonna talk, we're not gonna talk about that tonight and get into that so we can move through our agenda. What I, what I'll say from a chair perspective is, I agree totally. And I'm the longest tenured Boylston rep currently. And if what that means is we have enough folks who believe that this school committee shouldn't be here and aren't representing us in the way that we need to be represented and resignation is requested and asked for, you know, I'm the, I'm the highest guy on the totem pole, right? I'm, I'm willing to do that if that's what that takes. My, I want to see what's done in the best interests of Boylston, Burlet, and all those things. What I would encourage people to do is reach out and shit in to me or another school committee member, if you have interest in a school committee position. I think we have potential school committee members who will be resigning soon, maybe thinking about resigning. And there might be a path to solving some of these issues a lot easier than, than, you know, trying to combat and fight the process, right? So we want to do the right thing. If I would encourage people to reach out to school committee members, gain as much education and knowledge as you can as what truly the process is, what truly it means to be a school committee member. Most of us joined this school committee way before any of this happened with the goal of doing what's in the best interests of this district for everybody. Now, so if that's what it means, you know, I, I'm on board, right, with doing what, whatever is the right thing to do for our community. So that's just the update I wanted to provide and I wanted to allow for any school committee, you know, questions or comments. Does anything else, any other ideas anybody has that wants to move us through that? I'm gonna continue to update. We'll continue to keep this topic on our agenda so that I can provide, I can say that there's no updates or I can provide updates as we move through. But the goal is to, you know, it, it's funny, right? I, I mean, going into year five here and I've been on here when there's been multiple spots open and we have had to beg people to volunteer. And I'm, I'm just being very straightforward. We've had to beg people to volunteer for these roles. So if there is an extreme amount of interest, please come to us, talk about it, you know, I'm willing to work with it and whoever it is. You know, I think as a committee, I find us to be a fair, you know, really reasonable group and, you know, I think we can come to consensus that makes sense for everybody and move us through this process until we can officially have our election.
Jim, a question?
Yep.
According to the town clerks, when, when is the last date?
March first.
March.
March first, March first was the date, the, the March first was the, or the end of, so I guess it would have been the end of February, but March first, I thi- I think it was my, was the, they had to release papers to the other elections going on so that-
Nomination papers?
Nomination papers. So both communities, you know, just, they were really trying to help us all the way to the end, pushing, we were on Kilcoyne, all those people, all legislators trying to get this done all the way up the chain. And our, our great communities held their, held their nomination papers for all the other things going on until the latest timeframe that they could.
So, so there is no way the ma- uh, school committee members can, residents can run for a school committee this year on the, for the May tenth elections now, right?
I, I, I don't want to put false hopes out there. Something might happen. Our lawyer is continuing to look into it.
If the town clerks say there's no-
Based on what the town, based on what the town clerks say, yep. The nomination papers have been- The feedback from the communities as well has been that there is no budget for holding a school committee special election, so it would have to come out of the school committee budget to do it.
Well, when will they have the, the figure that it will cost?
I would expect in the next couple, next couple of days, Mike.
We expect it's like tens of thousands, single digits. What do you think? I don't, I have no idea what this is.
Mike, you, I, I, my would give that answer. I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. You know, a- at all.
If it's under eighteen thousand, I have a suggestion where we can get it, but John's not gonna be happy.
A- a- and those, and that might be, if, that might be the discussion. And again, I mean, you gotta remember it's, you know, it's the impact. What will that impact be? What will? What will that be? I mean, at the same, at the same time, it could just be added to the school committee budget. You know, if the town believes that it's, you know, you know, if, if it could just be added to the school committee, if it doesn't replace something, and then we'll have to work through both communities in Selectment and FinCom and you know, all that good standard process that we typically do. And, and again, it'll be up to the, the voters to vote on those particular budgets, right?
As for the options that you, you mentioned about different ways to get this done, one of those was resignation and appointment, right? Would that be similar to the process I went through in December?
Yeah.
School committee would-
Yeah.
Where it lies. So I would just caution against that since if people are upset that this committee missed the election, you're then gonna have this committee that missed an election appointing other people. So I mean, if, if it comes to that, that probably wouldn't be the best option.
I, I don't disagree, I don't, I don't disagree, Mike, but at the same time, if, you know,
If someone resigns in the due course of white and that comes up, then that's a different story, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just speak, I'll, Mike, I'll just speak for myself, right? I will speak for myself. If, if there's an outcry to remove Jim Spencer from school committee or an outcry for just a changeover in general, that this was an unfair process and something needs to be done about it, I'll resign. I, I, you know, it's not what I want to do because it's not what I signed on here to do long-term, but at the same time, you know, you know, I'll do what's in the best interest of, of, of everybody. I'm, I'm, you know, it's-
Was it April of this year? When you said that, you kind of broke up. Was it April of this year that the deadline was, sorry, twenty twenty?
It was April, it was April of twenty twenty. Yeah. April fifteenth, we, we, we missed that deadline to file for the November twenty twenty election.
And just, it was a new rule, so nobody knew what to do or?
Yeah, it wa- we didn't, it wasn't quite, you know, it wasn't quite laid out. You know, if it, if this requires somebody falling on the sword, you know, I'll fall on the sword on it too as well. I think, I think, Mike, to be just completely transparent, I think it was a new process. We hadn't been a regionalite. We're so, we're all used to these May town elections. You know, we, we, there were some questions around once you regionalize, who's, who's considered the secretary, the clerk, all different types of role type confusion, all that type stuff. And it really had just never hit the plate of the committee to be prepared to file that because it was so new and we missed it. And there was some cha- there was some changeover at chair at that time. I, I, I might have been chair, but I think I had just become chair. I, I don't know. I don't remember when I became chair, to be quite honest with you.
Is it, uh?
Feels like ten years ago, but.
Requirement to do that, is that, I, I wasn't there at that time, so I don't know. I didn't go through it. So I'm asking questions just to understand what happened.
Sure, absolutely.
So is it one of those rules at the time where if you become a regional district, this is like a state rule that needs to be followed? Or is it a rule that the committee came up with as part of their going region?
It's in the-
I'm assuming this isn't a rule that you knew about until it was too late, right?
Right, no. I think I can speak to that. I know Susan can too. It is in our regional agreement how we're supposed to run the election so that we have one voice, one vote, which for us meant that all school committee members needed to run in both towns at a biannual election.
You guys brought this into your own document?
Yes, this is part of the agreement, which is why we had to have this home rule petition go to the legislature because we we missed doing what our agreement says. And I know as I served on the regionalization subcommittee, I have to tell you, it was not on my radar at all that there was something that I was, we were supposed to file before April fifteenth. And believe me, I kicked myself every day and I still don't even know. I'm sorry, yes?
Is there anything else in the agreement that we're supposed to do that we, that fell off our radar too that we don't know about right now? Like, what could we be missing right now?
No, I don't, we're not missing anything else. It was just that I honestly, I made the wrong assumption that the town clerks would do what needed to be done. I didn't realize it was a school committee thing. And I still don't even know how to file, where to file or, or what to do. And I guess I also so I feel, I, I'd like kick myself that I didn't even think of it. And I guess my question, my other comment would be, I feel totally uncomfortable using school district funds for the election. And I have been on the committee almost nine years in May and part of, I intended to be done in January, but I stayed on knowing that having an election is better than being appointed. But on the same time, in my nine years serving on the committee, there's been two times where there's been two people going for a, a position. So as Jim said, it is it's an thankless sort of job and it's I think if you have to appoint someone, it's okay. And I made it publicly known, I, I can't go on beyond May. So my other thought too was that is it possible to do both, to resubmit a home rule petition so that we could be school committee members could be elected in the May twenty? But yeah, we know. Never mind. No, because it's just a few months difference.
Yeah, we would submit.
Yeah.
We would, we would, we would resubmit the home rule petition with the new date of the election date of May twenty-two.
Yeah, but isn't there a biannual election that fall anyway?
There, there is, so I mean-
So we'd have to submit file for that.
You would, I think you would skip the biannual election that particular year and you would have your election in May and then go back on to your biannual. That seems, that does, to me, that doesn't make sense, but if the demand for an election calls for it, that, that could, that could be. I would recommend as well sticking with the biannuals as-
Yeah. Changing things.
We do.
But you're asking this committee then to stay on until
Agreed, yeah.
You know, the end of twenty twenty-two. So then you can expect that not everyone might be able to-
I mean, at the same ti- at the same time, we, where we typically don't have a lot of interests in school committee, we've made some pretty serious decisions and, and directions over the past twelve months. I can see where an interest would come from, if there was a strong feeling of, you know, one way or another in terms of how things were handled. So I don't want to ignore that either. It is, so I, again, I think we need to let the process work itself out and what I would, what I would ask people to do is, you know, again, part of being a small town and a good, small community and, and committee is, I, I feel like everybody on this committee would do the right thing. And if, if there is some interest, if there is some extreme some people upset with this hasn't happened and there's some interest, bring it to us and then let's bring it to us. Let's talk to all the stakeholders and determine what the next, the best thing to do for everybody is moving forward there.
And in full disclosure, I must add that in my nine years, we've had four resignations. So we're more likely to encounter resignations than two people going head to head, which was, you know, most recently Lori, when we appointed Lori.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim, I appreciate that you joined to serve the community. I mean, personally, I joined just to give Jeff more headaches, but I just want to throw that out there. It's all right, buddy. But yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a bad situation, but see what people's- We've heard already, so we'll see. What's that, Jeff?
There's just a small road bump.
Anybody, we have received some, one letter, like I mentioned, any feedback, concerns, please email. Email me directly. Any concerns as laced to a legal respective will immediately bring in our lawyer and, and whatever's needed from that perspective. So you know, really just start the process by reaching out, letting us know your concerns, interests, and any of that stuff.
Jim, can I make one comment?
Yeah.
Just because I think Angela is phenomenal. I want us to remember what it was like on April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. We were just getting to the was it thirty days to slow the spread? And then we were going past that. There was a lot going on and, and not that it, not that we weren't that, that it excuses the fact that we didn't do that, but I think a lot of people, if they put themselves back at April fifteenth would realize that priorities were, were very skewed at that time. And Angela's done so much hard work. I just, I think you're phenomenal, Angela, and I don't want you to feel badly.
Thank you. I just, I remember like the beginning of the summer thinking, oh, we must need to do something. What's happening? Like, oh, you missed the deadline three months ago. What?
Well, that makes sense because at the beginning of the summer, we were like, oh, we're feeling a little better about life.
Yep. So that pro- the process of understanding all that stuff has started with Russ and kind of those options. So again, just, I would keep lines of communication open and I, I commit to the, to our community members that we will, I will update as much as I can as we get through this, in this process. So all right, with that being said though, we with the idea of it not being a May election now and we adjusted the timeline for the superintendent evaluation, we did want to consider relooking at and moving the time, the super to timeline evaluation back, especially after the vote we took earlier tonight where Jeff is gonna be getting the schools ready to maybe give him back that time to prepare for his evaluation. So, and Susan, I'm gonna ask you to assist me on this sort of discussion. Do we need to vote back to that tonight?
I, I think we should be, unless you think unless you think the, there's some chance of a May election, I guess the safe thing to do would be to vote on the ability to pivot over to this revised time schedule for the superintendent's evaluation if the May elections are not going to happen. That's, that was the point of having a second, a second one. I, I don't want to vote us into a corner though. So, you know, if, if some magic happens and there ends up being an election and we need to stay with the original timeline, I think it would be safe, safer to say that we accept this modified timeline if the May elections just cannot happen. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I I think if we're being forward, I think we, I think it's safer to assume that the May elections will not be happening.
Okay, all right. Well, then, if, if you feel that, then I make a motion to accept the revised timeline as presented in our materials. So that Jeff has more time to deal, focus on return to school and it's more like a typical year. We had condensed it before. Now we can spread it back out again. So motion to accept the, if you want to vote on this right now, maybe it waits till the business-
No, let's just, let's just vote. It was item number three in our business size, but let's vote on it now while we're, while, while we hear. So is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, is there any questions, concerns about moving that timeline back? Okay, he- hearing none. So we'll do roll call. Angela?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Mike?
Hi.
Lori?
Hi.
And deny from you as well. Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just say one thing I I meant to mention during the discussion around election timeframe? And I apologize. The time my mind is. You guys notice when my brain starts to turn off what time it is. Um, I I do think we should um have on our, with those May elections, we had planned on in a May election. Uh, I do want to get the committee's thoughts on, that would have put us in an election cycle for May, and then in our June meeting, we would have reappointed positions. Um, and so I want to give everybody the respect and aspect to walking through that process as well. I know it won't be with new members. But does, does the committee want to do that process uh in June and consider anybody else or reappointing uh positions? Any feedback one way or another there?
I'm not quite sure.
I don't, I don't really understand what you mean.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But we would have had an election in May. We would have then had to determine our chair, our vice chair, our sub, our secretary, all, we would have had to do all the typical appointment of positions after an election. We would have done that in our June meeting or our late May meeting, whatever the first meeting is after when the election was, we would be doing our appointment of chair, vice chair, secretary, uh, policy subcommittee. And any other, we would have had those discussions at that, at that time. Do we still want to do that? I want to make sure everybody, you know, I don't want to, you know, control everything. So I, you know, if there's an interest in re, in in having that discussion, and maybe we just end up with the same people, but do we want to entertain, do we want to continue to have that discussion to make sure at least there's an opportunity for anybody else who's interested in?
I think we have to do that at some point annually, don't we? I think, we have a, we do have a policy about that somewhere.
We do, yeah, yeah, we do. So we could do it at that time, if that makes sense. And it might make sense because, uh, you know, with Angela's resignation in May, um, you know, we might be appointing a new member at that time as well.
Well, that's the rule. You don't want to miss any more rules, so.
It's normally, we switch it to January, a reorganization of the committee annually, but um.
Typically, it would have been typically. Is it a rule or if it's not a rule, is it needed?
I, um, I'm looking up, I think it just says annually that we have to do that. I don't.
And and it's not a rule. It's not a rule.
It's, it's not a rule. This, you did do it this past January when I joined. Because when we did it, we, and then the other thing, because we we have made some agreements along the way, we'll figure it out too. I don't know what the rules, we got, we should probably maybe bring that to policy subcommittee and just talk about it. But we did talk about recently too about the chair position being a two-year position each time, because there was some, that was Cliff, Cliff, Cliff had had recommended that a few years back um about it being a two-year position, because just new chair every year lost some of the management aspect. So I guess I just want to take the committees, do we want to do it in June or do we want to uh do it first in the beginning of January of twenty twenty-two?
Um, I'm fine doing it in January, uh, just to stay on our normal schedule.
Anyone against that?
That's allowed, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So we'll go with January and Mike will review to make sure that there's anything that's not going to catch us on that one. And if it is, we'll, we'll re, we'll readdress that, that topic. All right, um, thank you all for staying on so long. So it will move to uh Diane and school choice recommendations.
Jim, could I um? So is is my evaluation in May? Or is it going to be still in April? I lost.
No, we're doing the later, the later schedule, the bottom schedule on that, on that handout, Jeff.
Yeah, okay. So could I, could I make a suggestion that we push the the principals uh presentation on Ames Web, not the school choice part, but the Ames Web to next month? Because by the time we get out of here, we'll be able to meet the CVS deadline for tomorrow, and we will be able to get appointments. That's been pointed out to me, so.
Yeah.
Six AM.
Yes.
Plus, if we're not going to do my evaluation next month, we could give the Ames Web stuff more time.
Uh, I'm okay with that from an agenda perspective unless somebody else has a concern with that. Okay, I don't know if I, I don't believe I need a motion to move that. Um, that's just an agenda management perspective. So we will move um, we'll move the Ames webs updates to uh our next meeting. So now you're up, Diane, with only half to do.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in reviewing the um projected enrollment, my recommendation um is for an additional five school choice slots to be um added to next year's seventh grade and open up um ten school choice slots um to our upcoming freshman class. So add a total of fifteen school choice slots um for next year. Typically, we we do sixth and tenth grade, but um next year's sixth grade, incoming sixth grade group, um, you know, already has eighty-four. And we like to stay right around um ninety. Um, but this year's sixth grade class um was a a much smaller group, um, so we would be able to add um five slots to the incoming seventh grade. Questions?
You're on mute, Jim.
I've been on mute that whole time, son of a gun.
Hell.
Um, no questions for Diane. I'm not hearing any. So we will move to Mr. Thompson.
Thanks, guys. Thanks everybody for sticking it out tonight. Um, I'm gonna skip over the rest of my report, go right to the school choice. Uh, this is the first year that I'm not making a recommendation of adding school choice seats uh in my years here. Um, part of it is because typically I look up into the older grades. It's a, they're a little bit tighter right now, and I feel like with so much uncertainty um around, around students moving and and things like that, the kids that we have in remote. Um, I'm not confident enough to to add some seats down there. The place where it would be the most um reasonable, when you look at our numbers, is my first grade. But again, you know, we had some students uh that went to private school. We're not sure yet if they're going to be returning. Uh, we had some, some other kindergartners that were red shirting and and things like that. So it feels like there's too much uncertainty around um those grades, those lower grades to to be adding. And I always, I I struggle in kindergarten and first grade because you don't know what those classes are going to grow to over the next six years, five, six years. So um, I am recommending not adding any school choice this year. Um, you know, potentially revisiting it next year, obviously revisiting it next year.
Oh, I have a question. Do we have any information on, you know, we did a lot of speculation about enrollment coming in from the River Bridge project over there, or the Rotary in Berlin, I'm sorry, ACE.
Oh, good, because I was like, I have no idea.
More kids? Um, I don't know if you have similar situation there, though. Um, and I'm wondering, do we have any other projections or or numbers or how, how is that playing out in terms of our enrollment?
It's been pretty minimal. Uh, I think we have right now three kids coming out of there. I assume it will grow over time. But right now, the impact is very small.
Okay, and and um, sorry, ACE. So I'm just wondering then, you have any other housing like that that you're waiting on or?
So they have finished the uh, the large apartment um complex. We haven't seen any kids come out of there yet. Uh, my understanding is I think they just started taking on um tenants within the last month or two. Um, and and that can add some, some variability coming into the fall, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Hard to predict.
Thanks.
Susan, I was wondering if I could just add to that, too, because John hasn't seen as much growth, but we've also had um some out of district older students that have come from that development, too. So we've had a few more.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that wasn't projected at all. I don't think the older students, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
John?
Okay, um, like Mr. Thompson, looking at our current numbers, we are kind of in a sweet spot for class sizes at Berlin Memorial. Um, and so I am not recommending school choice this year, which is hard because I'm a big fan of it. Um, it's also hard because we have a couple of families who we have children in our school through school choice who would love to have more of their children attend our school through school choice. But given the class sizes we're projecting in K, um, and the class sizes we have through the rest of the, the school, it doesn't seem prudent this year. And the one place where I might have looked at school choice is third grade, um, but we've already got six kids who are school choice. I'm reluctant to add to that number. So my recommendation would be not to do school choice this year.
Any questions to John? Bob, I'm sure you've had this conversation with all the principals. Any concerns, negative impacts in the lower school choice numbers from the elementary schools as it relates to our overall school choice funding?
Um, I I think that Toronto in um Berlin Memorial will be relatively level with what we planned for next year. Uh, Boylston will be a little bit less. Um, but the the flip side of that is if you um, you know, if you add school choice students, you kind of lock in certain number of classes you need per grade and gives you less flexibility to um make adjustments if you need to. So um, I think the, considering all the factors and also the just the, I think, you know, in conversations with, I think it was ACE, too. There's also just a concern about integrating our, our own students next year uh without integrating more students. Um, so I think weighing all the factors, it seemed like the small uh financial drawback of Boston Elementary uh was more than offset by um kind of the number of risks we'd already have uh next year.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for anybody as it relates to school choice committee? Right, next item on our agenda is um policy subcommittee report from Susan.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just make this brief because I think uh the read-first document I put in this folder pretty much lays out what we've done. Um, we, we have two, two policies up for a vote tonight that um were first reads last time. Uh, one of them, Angela spotted an error in uh what was uploaded. And so if you haven't looked just today, uh, there's some redlining on the EBC supplement. Um, so you might want to just check that. It was, I think, I think it was correct last time, but I don't know. Anyway, the correct version is there now. And then we spent time looking at the, at many of the um policies and the policy manual have no date on them at all. So it's very hard to tell when they were last reviewed. Uh, so our intent was to uh identify the policies that had no dates or hadn't been reviewed in at least five years and to at least review them in the committee. And if they didn't need any revision, we could just mark on there that the policy committee did review them and they don't need any revisions. So now a- all the policies in folder H should at least have a review date on them. Um, what we're recommending, two policies be deleted as described in the notes that I submitted, that five policies need no revisions at all, will just be marked with a date. And um two policies uh have some slight revisions to them. Um, so those are marked in your folder and redlined and and explained in this document. The only other issue that came up was that there was just a compliance issue in terms of the school committee sort of out of compliance with our policy about the number of committee members assigned to sign to sign the payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants. Normally, when we're meeting in person, all of us sign those warrants. So it's a non-issue there, but during this COVID period, we've had two, whereas a policy says it should be three. I committee can decide whether they want to do anything about that or just live with it the way it is uh for now, assuming that we'll be back in person at some time in the near future. So I think that's, does anybody have any questions about anything there? If that's all explained, I think, yeah, Bob.
You should change it to two. You're allowed two. I I don't know why you need three. Um, most districts would have about less than half the members on a subcommittee, and we should be um posting the ones that are approved outside the meeting. You know, as attachments to the school committee agenda, but I I don't, the requirement is two. I'm not sure why three was voted.
I think that, I think it was the language that MASC recommended. I'll go back and check it, though.
Yeah, and that may have been the recommendation, um, which makes sense for large school committees, but.
Okay, okay, we can bring that back in and and revisit that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Susan? Okay, the next item is our school committee goals update. I I, we can, if there's, if anybody wants to provide a quick update, I'm sure there's probably um not as many updates as we typically would have around this, these topics, but is there any any update that anybody wants to provide from a school committee goal perspective?
Uh, yeah, uh, met with Jeff on, Jeff, I don't remember what day it was. I'm sorry, man. Was that last week?
No, I don't remember either. It was.
It was last week at some point. So um, um, we, we just discussed on, you know, obviously the community engagement and uh I'm been reaching out to other uh people in the community to be a part of the advisory boards. And that's all I got. I'm going to be with them in two weeks. That's all I got.
Good, okay. Yeah. I'm feeling badly that all these wonderful administrators are having to hang out with us here while we take care of this stuff. Can they be let go so they can get some rest for tomorrow?
Sure.
I just like watching.
Yeah.
All asleep, that's what I want.
Yeah.
Unless, unless Jeff has any need to have any of them uh still on, we can, he can.
We're up to our.
We can let everybody go.
Items.
Okay. All right, good idea, Susan.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Thanks, everybody for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for staying on for so long. Appreciate it. Angela, did you have any update you wanted to provide? Okay. All right, I think we'll, you know, now that we've gotten over a couple of bridges here or or things, where I think we can maybe refocus some of our efforts uh back onto the school committee goals and hopefully get us, get us, get the ship uh going in the right direction a little bit, hopefully moving forward and and might be a good um. And one of the things we'll talk about in the future is, you know, we didn't, we didn't do a um governance workshop this year with Dorothy. So we we're probably going to want to get one on the calendar end of this year, next year, and it might be a good topic to, to bridge, you know, how to revise goals, keep up with goals, watch goals um with everything that went on. I'm sure we're not the same, I'm sure all the school committees are in the same thing. So it might be interesting to have that as a topic with Dorothy during a governance workshop.
But even forming the goals, I mean, we're, we'll be doing another self-assessment.
Yeah.
And if we have that data, that's another piece of that.
Our self-assessment should be, we didn't, some of us didn't complete all.
It's broader than the goals. It's not just the goals.
Yeah, yeah, true that. Oof, self-assessment's going to be a rough one this year. Um, okay. Uh, all right, so we're into the business, business items, and I just want to make sure just everybody walk me through these things. Uh, all right. So we're into the business, business items. And I just want to make sure just everybody walk me through these things and catch me if, if I, this is typically where I start making my mistakes. So everybody catch me if I, if I admit something. So we, we already voted item number one. Correct, right? Okay. Item number two is the vote on the school calendar. We had a first read, uh, last meeting. We did have apparent communications earlier in the meeting, feels like two days ago, but it was only three and a half hours ago, four hours ago. We did have apparent communication. Is there any, um, so first let me do this. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the school calendar for 2021, 2022?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any questions, concerns, any discussion we need to have as it relates to the school calendar? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call vote, Angela?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Okay. All right. Uh, do I have a motion to approve policy CBI evaluation of superintendent review recommended changes?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Angela?
Aye.
Uh, Susan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Uh, all right. That's that one. Could I please have a motion to approve recommended changes in policy EBC-COVID?
Uh, so moved.
I'll second it.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Angela?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
When I as well. Uh, could I please have a motion to approve the school choice recommend?
Those are just first reads.
Oh, first.
They're first.
Oh, thank you. See, that's why I, you guys do catch me. I did a question. I'll, I'll ask you this question. The first reads and the job descriptions, do we, are there, there's no, no rush in order, you know, starting to think about back to some stuff about what can we get done earlier? What can we do earlier? Are any of these need, going to need to be approved quickly in order to hire people as it relates to getting back to school? Should we move any of these to a vote? Jeff, you still home? You still there?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, Christie.
That was one of my summer projects was to redo some of the older job descriptions. So, um, there are two secretarial positions at the high school that, um, it is a possibility they may be coming up for hiring, uh, this spring. So, um, it's not a rush to rush to a vote tonight, but, um, as a first read and perhaps a vote in April would be.
None of these were hired, none of these were need to be hired positions. These are.
No, none of them to hire to reenter school now.
Okay, good.
All right. That's, thank you, Christie. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Christie. I was asleep about to switch.
So, and again, I'm not trying to make this meeting any longer than it has to be, but I, I just want to talk about item number 14 real quick. So it was brought to my attention recently, some questions around hosting meetings for, uh, why am I drawing a blank? Uh, Susan, what, which committee we, were you and I talking about?
Moses Reed Tyler.
Moses Reed Tyler Scholarship Committee. And there were some questions and we, some discussion going back forth with, with Russ or whatnot as it relates to, should those be posted? All that type of stuff.
Yeah.
I think this is a topic that we need to talk about in the future and, and can see, and see how we do some of these things. So Russ's feedback, Susan, which I wasn't able to give to you prior to, to the meeting because of timing of our conversations was that he does think that needs to be posted because we are appointing a committee and then voting on the results of that committee. Russ is, and I think maybe we should have a more, another discussion about this, not tonight. Russ is, doesn't think we should be appointing and when we can not appointing committees like this and appointing members to these committees unless there's really, really a good reason to do it. You know, Russ was like, this should be community members, principals deciding this stuff, presenting it back to school committee for review, potentially a vote on there.
What do you mean, creating a committee without a school committee member on it? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, even appointing a committee like, I, you know, even if we appoint a committee, we're stepping into a role of appointing the individuals who are then going to make a decision on something, right? And present it back, which then we're going to vote on because we appointed the committee and he.
No, no, you're not a voting on them because you pointed a committee. You're voting on it as a committee because it states that in the will.
Right. So that's fine. And if we have to do that based on that particular, so my point is if that will states the way we need to do it, then we'll continue to do that way. But because of the way we do it, Russ said that does need to be a posted meeting, which is going to obviously.
Yeah, I don't know how you discuss student applications and protect privacy of students in that circumstance. And I wonder if, uh, so we need to discuss that more.
Yeah, my point is, yes, thank you. That's what kind of where I was going. We need to discuss.
Can't wait.
Oh, did we put off, is, what is the, is there a timeline impact to appointing a committee member from Berlin to organize the, is that, is there a necessity that we do that tonight?
This is Marion Hoffman.
Right. Well, my point is we're, we're appointing a committee member. Do we want to wait until we get the feedback on Russ's feedback on how we handle appointing these type of things before we make this decision? Meaning this could be an example against the, the, the other one. So Russ understands the different things that we're faced with. So he can give us the right feedback.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that Marion Hoffman one is set up. So I can't, they don't know the relationship.
I'm just saying, I don't think we should do, uh, my point is I, I don't think we should do this one now until we have feedback from Russ on more feedback and education from Russ. But what I'm asking is there a timeline impact if we don't do this tonight?
Yeah, Angela, you could.
For Marion Hoffman? No, there isn't because this award is given at fifth grade recognition, which happens usually in June. So as long as, honestly, as long as it's done by May, that gives the appointed member time to get the, um.
So everybody's okay with me moving this then to the next whatever until we have better feedback from Russ. Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
So I'm going to move that to our next meeting when we have more. Just because, because, just because we handle one thing with Moses Tyler Reed based on some legal will stuff, doesn't mean that's the right way we should handle it in all the cases. So I don't want to do that until, so, all right. So we're going to move, we're going to move that until we get feedback.
Mister, can I say one thing? And just so people are aware, the Marion Hoffman Award, there is a little bit of info on this committee handbook. And I also did a guidance document that's in your important documents, which kind of has it more thoroughly, like when it started, a little more detailed stuff. So, so if you need to read up on it, you can, but it's, it's much different than Moses Reed Tyler.
Yeah, okay. Yep. Agreed.
Just a question about the, oh, I'm sorry. Are we done?
Well, yep. Please go ahead.
Um, just looking ahead to the next meeting, which is two days before opening, uh, return to school for elementary. Right? You said April 15th or five, five, I think it's got 15 is in my head.
It's the day after the opening for middle school, high school.
Yeah. So is that, is that good timing? Is that okay timing for administration? Or do you feel like that that's just too much on top of each other?
I, I think we should keep it. It's our date. We, we've approved all these dates.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's tenable. Uh, you know, maxing out, we've just, uh, we've just crammed up the date for them. So I want to make sure we're not maxing out our leadership team. We do have a second meeting in that month held, uh, as a backup date. So I just want to check.
What's on the agenda for that, for that meeting?
Uh, I don't even know yet quite what's on that agenda. Haven't looked at that one yet. We could.
Ames Web is going to be there, right? That night.
Yep. Yep. So.
I think that's it.
You're okay with that, Jeff? That meeting is okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I suppose. I mean, I, I don't see a lot on it except the Ames Web really.
Okay.
Yep.
They already had it prepared. So I don't think they're going to have to, there's not a lot for them to do to, to do it in April because it's already prepared.
No, no, I was just thinking about your role in the school committee meeting the day after, uh, school starts, but fine, that's fine, whatever.
Do you want to know about it now? I think it's a little delayed for that, isn't it?
They don't want you crawling into school committee meeting, you know?
Yeah.
That's all.
All right.
Are we ready? Motion to adjourn?
Yep. I heard it. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All right. Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Angela?
Aye.
Susan? Mike?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Keith? Hi from me as well. Thank you, everybody.